I'm the second vice chair.
Second vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Dick Ward as chair.
Wait a minute, we gotta do the flag.
Well, I wanted to get it in there, like really.
He has to call for it first.
Right.
Okay, so we're opening the meeting and it's 7:05. And can we pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I read the announcements? Are there openings on several committees? Please contact the selectman's office for a listing and application. Donations to the food pantry can be made to the Council on Aging or the public library. The Historical District Commission has Carveropoly games for sale for $20. Okay. We number one issue tonight, 7 o'clock, it's 7:05. Reorganization of the Board of Selectmen.
And I'd like to nominate Dick Ward as chair.
I'll second that. And we didn't talk.
I cut the ladies' votes here.
As you always do.
Is there any discussion?
Just to say that you've been a great person to work with over the past few years that I've been on the board, and I think that you will be a fantastic chairperson.
Thank you, Helen.
Even without your disagreements along the way.
We can still disagree.
Always.
And I agree, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Dick Ward, Jim, please say aye.
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 Unanimous vote, Elaine? I hated declaring, and somebody else should have been there doing that. Okay, we'll start right into the agenda. Proposed rescheduling of the town meeting from June 2nd to June 16th.
Mr. Chairman, just a real quick thing, do you want to appoint a vice chair for the selectmen?
I think you're right. And, yes. Okay, do we have any nominations for a vice chair?
I would make a recommendation to nominate Ron Clark for vice chair since he has a lot of experience serving as selectman over the past years.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Long as Dick doesn't miss any meetings, I'm fine with that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Clark as the vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous decision. I noticed that in one of our documents that we were going to look at, that Mr. Dunham is suggesting that we have a treasurer.
Actually, I don't see that one on the agenda, so during selectman's notes, I was going to ask that that be on the next agenda.
Okay, good. All right, now we go to the rescheduling of town meeting from June 2nd to June 16th.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this year, the Board of Selectmen voted to have town meeting on June 2nd. I think one of the things that you'll hear me talk about is that the process we have set up right now, where you have an election right before town meeting, makes the budget process a little bit difficult from the standpoint of new members maybe coming on to the board, just as you have right here, and then all of a sudden they're confronted with a budget, and then immediately have to go to town meeting to vote on that budget. So that's one issue. I think the second issue is the town accountant and I have been scrubbing the numbers pretty hard, and we finally, and literally at 7:01 this evening, have a full printout that shows what we believe the finances are for the town, as well as we just received the school budget today at 4 o'clock. That being said, I'd like to suggest that we take a few extra weeks, a couple extra weeks, to make sure that this budget is vetted. You're going to hear some recommendations from the Governance Committee that I think do need some more public vetting. So, we did double check to make sure that the 16th is available for town meeting date. It is, and it would be my recommendation to the board that you do postpone that for two weeks.
I'll make a motion that we move town meeting to June 16th.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
I just wanted to ask you, Michael, have you been able to speak with the town moderator at all?
The town moderator's been spoken to, yes.
Dick, I guess, Michael, just, is it going to be your intent to try to get town meeting to be taking place prior to elections as we go forward? I mean, it might not be, might not be able to do it by next year, but over the next year or two or three, to try to get our financial protocols in place so that you don't have a new board walking into an existing budget that hasn't participated in all the discussions? It would just, I know, I think the reason we used to wait was we were hoping that some money might shake off the tree by the time the legislature got around to setting a budget, but we can always come back in the fall if it turns out we got more money than we anticipated, or less, I guess. But is that some, a goal that you would try, is that something that's feasible?
That's something that I would be eventually recommending, and we had a discussion, brief discussion in the Governance Committee about that as well today, is trying to figure out how we put in, and this ties into the Finance Committee, is putting together a budget process and a budget schedule so that the budgets can all take place earlier on, so that we can be in a position to have a town meeting in the end of April to actually vote on the budget. By that time, you do have the state's initial budget, there's usually not a lot of changes that happen. Now granted, every $50,000 is important, but we're looking at, you know, a $37 million budget, and to hold up for $50,000.
No, I agree.
In comparison, may not be there. So, to answer your question, the answer is yes, I would recommend that on many different levels.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? I was just thinking of town meetings, we have, I mean, selectmen's meetings, we have one on the 27th, then we have one the second Tuesday in June, so that'll give us two more selectmen's meetings before the town meeting on the 16th.
Correct. And you may determine after your meeting on the 27th that you want to schedule an extra meeting in between those two meetings, depending upon how the 27th goes.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're just taking a look at the budget tonight, so we may need extra time to look it over and get into it, so.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I also think this is a good idea because I know, I'm pretty sure, the Finance Committee has not had a chance to even start looking through all these numbers yet, and we got to make sure we give them enough time to vet everything out also. So I think it's a good idea to postpone for two weeks.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to move the town meeting from the 2nd to the 16th of June, say aye.
Aye.
And nays? Unanimous? Okay. We have several documents under the next item. The document on blogging, the document on code conduct, document on financial management policies, and the agenda policy. Do you folks see a long discussion on these four documents?
Maybe I should go ahead and give you a little bit of history on it. After getting elected, I went back and I looked at all the policies that the board had voted on, on the last couple, last couple of years, and I thought back to the meeting you had with the facilitator, and it was his recommendation that the board vote on certain policies, and then when the new board came on, you know, was elected, to go ahead and do that as soon as possible, so I thought, if we could get it done tonight, we could get it out of the way and get these policies in effect again for this board. I did recommend a few minor changes on a couple of things, it's mainly just wording. There's a couple of things that may be a little more substantial that may take a little bit of discussion.
So, okay, why don't we go through them?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have actually quite a lot to say about the code of conduct and the financial management policy.
All I'm, all I'm wondering is, is it something that we should be looking at and then putting on the next meeting?
Well, that's what I was going to suggest for those two. I think the blogging one and the agenda are much more straightforward, that's just my opinion.
Okay, so there may be some of these that we would be able to get through and then hold on, on one of the other policies? Okay, let's take the first one then. All right, revoke? Yes.
Since Alan is the individual that sort of suggested the changes, if Alan could pretty much just highlight, you know, the places in red where he's made the, he can just sort of explain what is actually being changed, because we're familiar with the old policies.
Okay, the, the policy on bloggers' code and conduct. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, before we get into the details, is I think postponing the financial management policy is a little problematic because the budget is based upon those financial management policies, so if the policies are going to change, then the budget may not reflect the policies of the town. So, I know there may be a lot of discussion, I actually believe that that discussion would be appropriate tonight, just before we get into the budget, so that if there are some changes that need to be done, we can do that versus discussing a budget tonight, then coming back in two weeks and saying we want to change the policies the budget was based upon, is going to create kind of a circle that I don't think we have the time to.
Well, just to briefly counter that, I mean, you know, part of your job, we know, is to produce a balanced budget, and so even if we don't adopt a financial policies, we're expecting you to produce a, you know, balanced budget. I don't see why not voting on it tonight would keep you from doing that.
It wasn't the concern of not voting on it, it's just if there's, if there's going to be substantial changes, that, I guess that's my.
And I guess my issue is, if it's just a question of time, I'd just as soon sit and go through it now than wait, so I don't have any problem with just, I mean, we'll be here either in two weeks or we'll be here tonight, so I'm just as happy to go through it now and.
Okay, let's, let's go through them, one at a time. All right, would you, in the case of the bloggers' code of conduct?
Yeah, that was a pretty, just a minor one, I just want to try to emphasize that, you know, the board is really requesting this from the owners of the blogs, so it's essentially the same, I just added one sentence, "We, the members of the Board of Selectmen, request the following of owners of blogs," and basically just, I just thought, put a little more emphasis on it, just a real minor change.
The audience hasn't, hasn't got a copy of this in front of them, I don't think. Should we be reading it?
Well.
It's essentially, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it's essentially what is in place with the addition of the one sentence, so.
Okay.
It's what's already in place, one addition that says, "We, the members of the Board of Selectmen, request the following of owners of blogs."
And I'll make a motion to approve the change to the code of conduct and accept it.
We're not voting on the code of conduct yet.
Not the.
Bloggers' code of conduct, yep. Bloggers' code of, yep. All right, we've got a motion by.
I'll second that.
Ms. Maroni, and seconded by Mr. Clark. All right, any further discussion? We got this discussion before we did the motion. All right. Let's vote. All those in favor of accepting the amended bloggers' code of conduct, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, unanimous, Elaine? All right, one down. All right, now the code of conduct of the Board of Selectmen, that would be the second one. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to make a motion on that first, so?
Yes, make a, yes, please do that. Okay, you made the motion?
Yeah, I move that we accept the code of conduct of the Board of Selectmen with the annotated changes.
All right, and would somebody make a second on that?
I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
Okay, discussion. Alan, why don't you go ahead with your discussion, were you added or subtracted?
Okay, the first one under one, a member of the Board of Selectmen in relation to his or her community should, and it was item number B, and it was just changing it from saying, "Realize that he or she is one of a team," I just changed that to read, "Realize that he or she is a member of a team," I just thought, yeah.
Come on, grammatical.
Right. The next thing was I added an item G under section one, "Once the vote has been taken by the board, support that vote and do not criticize the vote in public or to the press." You know, we can have, my rationale with that is we can have just lots of discussions and they maybe end up as spirited debates, but once the board has gone ahead and reached the decision, we need, as a board, we need to go ahead and support that decision by the board. That was my rationale for that one statement. Do you want me to go on the other one, or you want to talk about that one first?
Can we talk about that one first?
Sure.
Okay, so my, I have an issue with the item G because I feel that we're, as elected representatives, we're here to represent our constituents, and if one of us feels that the rest of the board has done something that's not appropriate, I think that we have the right to exercise our minority vote and to, that public criticism is a basic right, and as public officials, we need to be able to take that as well. I think that that's, that's problematic to me insofar as, you know, when the President of the United States gets elected, if someone doesn't like it, they're allowed to say that, and I think the same should hold true here. Also, under number one, I think it should be added, the phrase should be added, "With administration delegated to town administrator and other responsible parties," because there are other responsible parties out there that don't fall under the town administrator, particularly other elected officials, the town clerk, the fire chief, who's appointed by the Board of Selectmen, the library trustees, et cetera. So, it's just a, that's a point of clarification, but my main issue is this not being able to represent our constituents and to speak our, exercise our minority opinions.
Mr. Chairman, the, under A, what was after town administrator, what were you suggesting?
And other responsible parties.
Other responsible parties.
All right, so Alan is adding G, and you prefer not to add G, so maybe we're going to have to.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I'm just wondering how much of this might be semantics in terms of the word criticize?
Well, semantics means meaning, that's what the word means, Ron, right? So, it means something.
What was Alan's intent when he says criticize, does that?
So if that's not his intent, then let's change the word because that is what it says.
What I wanted to ask Alan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, basically, you know, Sarah's perfectly, absolutely right, you know, each of us has to represent our constituents, those that elected us. However, my feeling was, that's when you bring your, the problems up during the debate of that particular item. Once the board has reached a decision, basically, you know, the debate should be done at that point, we've already gotten all our views out there, we've considered the pros and cons, and to me, it was just, you know, once the board makes the decision, whether it's a unanimous five bowl, whether it's a four-one, three-two, whatever the vote is, that's what we go with, and that's, because that's the decision of the board, it's a standing decision, and it doesn't really do a lot of good to go ahead and criticize it after the fact.
So, so Alan, I think maybe we're, we're kind of missing each other a little bit here because my, what I'm, I'm not suggesting that, you know, the person who's in the minority on the board then should go out and, and do the opposite, you know, do the opposite or be nasty about the board or something like that, but, so for example, you know, if something were voted on by the Board of Selectmen regarding, say, the fire chief, and you didn't agree with that, you, would you feel that this statement would keep you from expressing your disagreement with that if someone asked you, well, how do you feel about the Board of Selectmen having done such and such?
My statement would be, to people that ask me, "Has the board reached the decision? We argued the pros and cons, and that was a decision of the board." You know, at a later date, if I felt strongly enough, I could bring it up as an agenda item for reconsideration, but at that point, you know, it's a decision of the board.
I agree, I would also say that was a decision of the board, but it's my absolute right to be able to say that I didn't think it was the correct decision, but there's nothing I can do about it, that board, the board voted and the majority.
That's fine, we have a difference of agreement.
Okay, all right, folks, yeah, I don't want to get an argument going. Yes, go ahead.
I guess as I interpret that, I guess I, I'm thinking of criticize as maybe a little more demeaning than it could be, I mean, I would, I would reserve my right to say I disagreed with what the, with the board's decision, but that was the board's decision and I support it, but I, it wouldn't stop me from saying that I did not agree with the board's decision. But I, I certainly, you know, the, I think the idea is not to run a campaign to undermine the board.
Yeah, you don't want to undermine the board.
Would you like it better if I just took out the, "And do not criticize the vote in the press or public," just leave it at, "Once the vote has been taken by the board, support that vote."
That's better.
That would probably eliminate.
Would that, go ahead.
That's much better.
Achieves the same end.
Okay. So we don't need, I was thinking of taking a vote on each, on each suggested amendment, but if we all are in consensus of your original motion, and we just amended it a little, okay, let's go on to.
You go.
We won't vote, do you think it's a, you think we need to vote that number one section now?
I'd, I'd suggest we just go through the whole thing.
There's only one, there's only one more change that I proposed.
Because we have Sarah's addition under A as well.
Section number two.
Yep, basically, what I did was I added something, and we may want to change with the phraseology a little bit, but basically, "Do not denigrate or make statements in public or the press that may undermine the town administrator, which may impact the ability of the town administrator to fulfill his responsibilities or undermine his authority."
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, well, we don't need to make a motion on it, but just to point out to the public that this is under a section that is specifically how we, the Board of Selectmen, in his or her relations with the town administrator.
Correct.
Specifically, so that's why this, you added the statement about town administrator.
Did somebody?
I have a, something to say, to add to that.
Okay, go ahead.
So, and this, obviously, we're talking in that position here, so we're not talking about the individual in that position currently, or in the past, or in an interim, but again, supposing that individual does something that we feel is heinous, we're being hogtied, that we can't speak out about that, I mean, essentially, that's what that statement says, in my opinion. And again, we're not speaking of personalities here, we're talking about the position, and I think that's important to keep in mind.
My intent there was, again, you know, we have to, as members of the board, we need to support the town administrator. However, you know, if the board, if the board feels that the town administrator has done something really beyond the pale, then that gets into a disciplinary situation where we'd be meeting in exec, in executive session to go ahead and talk about it there and bring the town administrator, whoever he or she is, and discuss that item that we have the big problem with. But my concern is that we could, you know, if we're not careful, you know, we could be talking even amongst ourselves out in the hallways, and let's face it, this town hall has big ears, and there are no secrets, and if word were to get back, say, wow, Selectmen Dunham's really upset with the town administrator, if I go ahead and push it, I can go ahead and get him to change his mind or something like that, and that's something we really have to avoid.
Well, I'm sorry, Ron, if I may, I mean, I think, in some ways, I'm going to go ahead and say this, in some ways, I think this whole idea of the Board of Selectmen voting on a code of conduct to begin with is a little bit insulting, because I think that if we behave civilly and legally and ethically the way adults are supposed to, we don't need this, we don't need this. Why would we be denigrating people and, you know, whispering in the hall? I just, I don't see that, and I think it's kind of insulting to all of us, all five of us.
Through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Helen.
We are the leaders in the town, and the code of conduct is trying to set an example because this town has been divided for several years now, going way back, and the reason the code of conduct is we're all professionals and mature adults, but by setting the tone, by putting it in writing, we're saying to the whole general public, let's stop, let's all come together, we're going to set an example, we're putting it in writing that we're going to adhere to this. When I'm at a manager's meeting, in, again, it's the private industry, but when we have a senior management meeting, we also have votes, and once we come to a consensus, because we're the leaders of the company, in this case, it's the leaders of the town, we have to show consensus, and I think that's all that Alan is trying to instill here, is that you can still say anything you want, this is just a template to kind of work as a basis for, once we make a decision, let's come together, support it, everyone that is your constituent knows how you feel because they've been listening to the meetings, or they can read the minutes, does that make sense? So, we're trying to come together, so it's never going to stop your First Amendment rights to speak, it's just, we're trying to set an example, we're trying to set the tone, to let's all come together and treat each other nicely.
Well, I prefer to set the tone by my behavior, I guess, I don't see the necessity of having this in writing, I still think it's insulting, and it was to the last board, and I think it is to this one, it's just my opinion, I mean, why would we do that? I just don't see that.
Okay.
Ron had something.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, and just to your overall point, Sarah, I mean, I know in my individual job description, there are elements in my job description about expected behavior, and I know every year I have to sign off on something for Liberty Mutual in terms of sort of an overall code in which I'll conduct myself, so I don't think it's all that unusual for a corporation to lay out expectations of the behavior of its, you know, the employees. And in this case, I think, you know, there's no penalty imposed upon us if we violate, you know, one of these codes, I think this is all a spirit that we want to embody, and, you know, it's a guideline that we're trying to suggest, and to what Helen said, you know, we've had, we've had a few rough spots in recent years, and I think this is just one way to try to lay it out there, and, you know, hopefully find a way that we work together and can agree to disagree on things without making it personal, so.
Do I get to express my opinion here?
Sure. As chair, you, you don't get to say anything.
No, I.
That's why we put you there.
I think that we have to, I mean, we're asking a blogger's code of conduct, I think we have to set an example and adopt a code of conduct so that everyone can see what we expect somewhat of ourselves, simple as that. I want to set an example, if I can, to the community, so that's why.
And I do too, so, I mean, if I were to vote against this, it doesn't mean that I'm not going to set an example by my actions.
So, let's, do we need to vote on this particular item?
I have a question about 2C.
2C, yep.
To give the town administrator full responsibility for discharging his or her disposition and solution, I just don't know what disposition and solution means. I've read the governing document and the duties of the town administrator, and, you know, it's pretty straightforward, but I don't, I'm not sure what disposition and solution means.
Mr. Town Administrator?
2C.
2C.
I didn't touch that one.
Disposition and.
I don't know, I mean, it sounds, I don't know even what it sounds like.
It's, the 2C says, "Give the town administrator full responsibility for discharging his or her disposition and solution," and the question is, what does that mean?
I don't even remember that one.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have an answer for you, these, these aren't my code of conduct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's on, it's on the document.
I don't remember this one at all. I agree.
Might I suggest we remove that, that one, because it does, I agree, it doesn't make a lot of sense, and the reason I didn't touch it, because I wasn't sure what it meant.
Okay.
I mean, I believe what it gets into is in the duties and the responsibilities of the position, it's just worded a little awkwardly.
It is awkward.
Okay.
And if that's picked up in one of the other clauses, then you're all set, but if it's not redundant, then it should be stated in there.
Is there a consensus?
It's in the governing document what the duties and responsibilities are of the town administrator, powers and duties is set out right there.
So is there a consensus that we drop C?
Yeah, I think it's inherent in the town administrator's job.
Right, in his job description.
All right. We still haven't decided on what we're going to do with E?
Well.
Well, actually, again, I mean, we've talked about it, and I thought we were going to vote on the whole thing at, in total, so.
Okay, but if we, if we don't vote on that, then Sarah would have to vote against the whole document because she didn't like that one.
That's a good point.
So, why don't we vote on that one? Well, that still would mean that you would be opposed to the overall document, right?
Not if, not if some of the other changes I'm hoping get in there are made, no. So far, we've made changes that I'm not opposed to, except for that.
Except for E. Okay.
I, Mr. Chair, I'd suggest we just vote on the entire document. Because if Sarah doesn't agree, it, it, and I hate to single out Sarah. If a selectman doesn't agree with a provision that's changed and the provision is carried forward because it's, you know, decided, then it's gonna be there when they go to vote in the whole document anyway, so.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know that it makes all that much difference.
All right, there are no suggested changes on the section three and four, but.
I think Sarah made that.
Do you have some concerns?
So, on section three G, I, I have a very similar concern to, as I did before. It says refrain from speaking negatively about a fellow member of the Board of Selectmen, whether verbally or written. And again, I think it's a, it's a question of what you mean by negative. If someone does something on the, as a fellow board member that you feel was wrong, I think we have an obligation to say something about it. I don't think that's criticism, that's a statement of fact. And I think it's our, I think it's our duty to speak up about it. And, and open meeting law actually encourages public discussion. So, I, I just think it's a, it's a freedom of speech issue and I think it's an open meeting law issue. And I think it's the, the right thing to do.
Mr. Chair, Mr.?
Mr. Dunham, yep.
I would, when I looked at this, I looked at this as more of outside of the, you know, of the meeting of the board. I don't see this as getting into a public meeting violation or hampering discourse and discussion during the meeting itself on particular items. To me, I saw that as more as, once we're done with the meeting, the, you know, we've done all the votes, now we've gone up, out into the public and it's there to refrain, to go ahead and, you know.
Well, again, I, I disagree, Mr. Dunham. I think that we have the right and the obligation, actually, to tell our constituents why we feel what that person did was wrong. I don't think we should be hampered by that as minority opinion, as citizens, as voters and as elected officials.
I, I, believe me, I understand where you're coming from and, you know, your feeling on it. But, you know, again, it's just a difference of opinion. To me, this is more of, you know, how we conduct ourselves as board out in the town. We're, you know, amongst the voters and constituents.
Probably a very important place for it to matter, actually.
And, and I guess the way I, I looked at it, I looked at it as beyond simply having a conversation with someone in the coffee shop saying I disagreed with Alan when he made that, that suggestion and I felt, you know, I don't think that's being negative.
No.
I think it's making personal comments about Alan, you know, that, I took it as negative in a negative sense as opposed to simply disagreement with the position.
And if that's what it means, again, that's part of the problem with this whole document. We shouldn't be doing that anyway. We're supposed to be grownups. Why would we be saying, you know, look at that Alan, he walks funny or something? I just made that up. I just made that up, I'm just saying, to your point that.
He's just too small.
This is not, this is talking about that sort of negative comment.
We gotta move on, folks, we gotta move on.
We shouldn't be dealing with that here.
I guess, I don't hear any motion to.
Sarah, do you have any other?
Not on section three, no.
I mean, on anything else?
On section four, yes.
Section four? Okay, let's go to section four.
So, section four B, a limit contact to specific town staff. While I'm in agreement with that to a certain extent, I don't think the Board of Selectmen should be harassing staff or, you know, telling staff directly what to do. That's the job of department heads and also the town administrator. But I think the town administrator is, is only one of many professionals who serve the town here. And there are others, particularly department heads and, and other people who work for the town, that if we're prevented from talking to them, how are we to form an opinion about what's happening? Whether we, yeah, and then we're asked to vote on something? How can we form and have an informed opinion if we haven't been able to talk to the very people who are dealing with a particular issue? And also, it, it, actually, it influences the annual performance review of the town administrator position as well. Because if we can't talk to the people who work for him, how can we make an informed annual performance review?
Well, it says limit contact. It doesn't say nothing at all.
And again, through you, Mr. Chair, I think this, again, I, I, I look at this as another type of cooperation, if you will. It, it's proper protocol that you usually, if you wanted to speak with a subordinate, you, you would go through the department head for the most part.
Well, I, I said that, I said that, I agree with that.
Right, and again, it's limit contact, it's not saying you can't contact. Again, this whole document, Sarah, is the spirit of trying, it's new beginnings for this town, God willing. And this is just, we're just trying to set the tone. You can still write your newsletters, you can still go to your department heads, you can still go to your subordinates, you can, you can still talk to anyone in town. It's just trying to set the tone of camaraderie and.
Thank you, Helen, I appreciate that.
And I guess to add on to that, when I read this, the way I, what I, my takeaway was, a selectman should not be, almost as, you know, don't undermine, you know, the town administrator by going around his back. It, it was intended for that, not for me to be prevented from going to the Assessors Department and asking a question on, you know, how much will the average home, homeowner's taxes go up for every million dollars that, that we have to bond or something? So that, I, I didn't, so I, I saw it simply as just trying to say, you know, if you're gonna take on a project or if you're, you're, be, be upfront, make sure the town administrator knows you're out there working on something.
And I, I would think we would all do that anyway, so, again, I have that issue.
Understood, but it's just part of the overall understanding.
Okay. On C and D, my only suggestions might be that we add the phrase where it says, concerns about staff performance should only be made to the town administrator through private discussion. And, and the D, all requests go through the town administrator. I think it was, it's appropriate to add, and appropriate, or, and department heads where appropriate. Because I think sometimes you have to go to those people as well. And, which is not to say that you're undermining anyone because obviously you would be going to the town administrator as well. So, this is just additional.
So, where do you wanna put the department heads, right after?
Well, in C, I would put it after the phrase town administrator and appropriate department heads. And then on D, after the last word, office.
Anybody have a problem with that? Okay.
Just, just for clarification, are you talking about something that you would bring up as a disciplinary thing to a department head? Because I just worry about employment law.
I, I would never do something like that.
I understand that, so I'm, I'm asking the question, trying to understand what you mean by C, where you'd be able to, will you be bringing in concerns about staff performance to department heads?
I would want them included in a discussion with you, yes. Because after all, they're their own, they are their department heads and so they should know what's going on if their staff is being discussed. Unless there's some legal reason that they can't be, obviously.
So, you're, in C, you're saying it would be the town administrator in the presence of the department head?
Right, unless, as Michael pointed out, there's some legal employee reason why they can't be. Obviously, there are situations like that.
Probably one way to do it would be, town administrator, comma, including appropriate department heads, comma, through private conversation.
Wouldn't you just say town administrator and appropriate department heads?
Yeah, that's fine too.
Yeah, it's.
That's good.
And does anything change in D?
D is just the addition of appropriate department heads with the caveat, obviously, that some legal employee situation where we could only talk to you, that's totally, totally different.
Okay.
And I just caution that any selectman getting involved in an employment issue could put the town in jeopardy and just caution everyone to go through the proper protocol. How you choose to do that, that's your decision, but I can only guide you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Now, just real quick on D, we're, I, appropriate department heads, that's fine. I, just, but just on D, it, it states, limit requests for staff re, support and, and, I can't even talk time, I'm still in Aruba. Limit requests for staff support and ensure that all requests go through the town administrator's office. In terms of the protocol in town hall, I'm not sure. But if there was staff support in need, wouldn't it have to come through you?
It should, I mean, I don't think that the intent is to have employees, whether department heads or not, have six different bosses, if you will.
Yeah.
Five selectmen plus the town administrators, who do they report to? And when they have priorities in closing out year-end reports, you know, how do they dictate their schedule? I think that D is more to give protection to the staff members
Right.
so that they can follow a proper protocol as to how they assign their priorities versus having six people try to tell them what their priorities are of the day.
Correct, and my intention was not to be their boss or to tell them what their priorities are at all, but rather to show them the respect of being copied on a piece of correspondence so that they just know what's going on.
Right.
That's my only intent here.
And that's why I'm saying, just to limit how many people are involved, it wouldn't really be us, it would be the town administrator.
Well, this document's about Board of Selectmen relations.
I was just a little confused on that one.
Well, this document is about Board of Selectmen relations, this part of it with town staff. So, I'm just suggesting that if there's a request made, that I think that we, the department head deserves the respect of just simply being copied on it, that's all.
All right, so you're talking about copying department heads onto those requests?
Yes.
Essentially?
Yes.
As opposed, I guess I wouldn't wanna see going to department heads without the town administrator.
No, absolutely not, no.
Okay.
So, it's okay to add the department heads at the end after office, administrator's office? That's the way we got it, right?
Yep.
That's where it's amended. All right, are there any other amendments that need to be added?
Got all those, Elaine?
If Elaine's comfortable that she has all the changes, I'll make a motion to approve the code of conduct of the Board of Selectmen as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, it has been, been motioned and seconded. Any other overall discussion? Okay, you ready for a vote?
I just wanna say that I appreciate the boards making these changes and I think it's a better document for it. I may still need to vote against it because of the one issue, but I do appreciate the board.
All right. Okay. All those in favor of adopting the code of conduct for the Board of Selectmen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll have to be opposed.
And so, before one, Sarah would oppose. Okay, two. All right. So, are we ready to go into the proposed town of Carver Financial Management Policies?
We've got that and the agenda policy to do, right?
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
All right, Alan, why don't you start it off?
I have a motion and second to get into discussion first, Mr. Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial management policies.
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Okay. I had some real problems and I still actually do, even after making my changes, to number six. The first thing I did was, because number six is pretty much talking about trying to work with the administrator and the superintendent of schools to go ahead and find ways where we can consolidate efforts and combine departments. But we added in there, we originally had, as the last sentence of that paragraph, new revenue shall be allocated after fixed and shared costs in the following manner. To me, that was mixing apples and oranges, you know, fixing what the breakdown's gonna be between new monies coming in to the town and the school. I thought that should be handled as a separate entity. So, my first recommendation was to just delete that last sentence in section six and make a brand-new section seven, which, new revenue shall be allocated after fixed and shared costs in the following manner, blank percent shall be allocated to the schools, blank percent shall be allocated to town services based on the FY15 budget. And then the following paragraphs just get renumbered. The only other problem I really have with number six is just the way it says, the school superintendent and the town administrator are directed by the adoption of these policies to explore any and all opportunities to reduce duplications of services provided, either more efficient or effective services to residents and/or reduce expenditures. This direction includes creating town-wide departments that are jointly managed by the school superintendent and the town administrator. I would like to see something along the phraseology that the school superintendent under the direction of the school committee and the town administrator under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. Because basically, the superintendent is working for the school committee, the town administrator. Yes, working for the town, but he's working for us. I'd like to see those two designations put in after each of those individuals. And that's my only recommended changes.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I agree with your recommendation of keeping them separate because otherwise, I, I'm, I could be wrong, but if you look at the cover, Carver governing document, the description of the appointment duties and personnel management duties of the town administrator, the town administrator is supposed to appoint all full-time, part-time and seasonal employees except those of the police and call fire departments and the school committee. And then it says, the town administrator should also prepare and keep current a plan establishing the personnel staffing requirements for each town agency except the school department. So, I think that your, your point is very well taken, those clauses, however you phrase it, that has to be in there because they have to be kept separate.
So, you're suggesting that the, the school superintendent, under the.
Under the direction of the.
School committee.
And the town administrator, under the direction of the Board of Selectmen.
Are directed by the adoption of these policies, okay.
Because this, my understanding, Mr. Melonowski, that this is gonna be going before town meeting to be adopted by the town, so it'll actually be the town's financial policies guidelines.
That would be the intent, is to put this as an article at town meeting.
Okay.
All right, Alan, do you have any other additions or omissions?
I don't on that one, I don't know if anybody else would like to make some changes.
How about anybody else?
What about number seven, Alan?
Number seven just becomes, new revenue shall be allocated after fixed and shared costs. Basically, it, seven took the last sentence out of paragraph six and made it its own item.
Okay, that, okay, I, I see, all right.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, and this may be a point of semantics again, but I think that's important. I, I think these are goals, I don't know that these are actually policies. Goals, it's good to have goals, but you can't always reach a goal. If you're setting something as a policy so that each year you have to set aside X percent, there may be years where you can't do that. And that's why in section four, I think it's correct, it actually, the document calls these things a goal of the town. We, we can always strive to achieve it, but we may not always be able to every year. In, in fact, some years it might be foolish to try to, to set aside some huge amount of money when we can't afford it. So, I think that's an important distinction.
So, this is really, if you read it right there, it says financial objectives. It is the financial objective of the Board of Selectmen. Then they talk about policy statements under the board, under that objection.
I agree.
Objective.
I agree.
So, why would the, the policy be as strong, it's, it's a financial objective?
It's a goal. Well, again, a policy is something that, the implication is it's something you have to do. And a goal is something that you would like to do.
No, you don't, because it's an objective.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you, perhaps we could add some phraseology of that, to that first section before we get into the financial objectives? You know, just a, a statement saying, you know, these are the following objectives, the town should make every effort to fulfill the following objectives or something along those lines. That way, that gives you the out, you know, it's not setting, it's not setting it in stone that come heck or high water, you have to hit every one of these marks. You know, it still gives you a little bit of wiggle room on, you know, if you have some downers.
Yeah.
All right, so how do you wanna do that?
I would say just create a third paragraph before it says finance, between, measure what, the last sentence of the second paragraph and before it says financial objective.
Something.
Help with wording on this one. The town should make every effort possible.
To meet these policies and objectives.
To meet the financial objectives. Got something better, Helen? I'll take it.
No, no, what I, I was just rereading that next paragraph so I could follow in line. And I, I, as I'm reading this, I'm wondering if that second paragraph may cover what Sarah's concern is. It is fully understood that the town meeting retains the full right to appropriate funds, da, 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 da. It is fully understood that the town meeting retains the full right to appropriate funds, da-da-da-da-da-da. And then it says, "It is equally important that the town maintain flexibility in its finances to ensure that the town is in a position to react and respond to changes in the economy and new service challenges without measurable financial stress."
It could, yeah.
I mean, would that cover the fact that if, if things change, that we aren't going to be able to adhere to every single one of these? Because econo, you know, economic changes or what have you. So do you think that would, that statement would cover it, Sarah?
Um, partially. I, I'm not sure what measurable financial stress means, really. I don't know what that phrase means. I just-
I, I take it as that we need to create the budget, et cetera, to make it work for the town without causing undue financial stress. So if, for example, on policy statement number seven, say we say fifty-fifty on the allocation to the school and the town, but we find out that-
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work for a particular year because of whatever reason, then we don't want to cause undue financial management stress and that we would have the right to be able to adjust it accordingly.
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess as I look at this, I, I see objective, goal, and policy being interchangeable. I don't think that they have different meanings unless this was adopted as a bylaw, which means we would have to hit every one of these as part, as required by our own bylaws. I, I think this is just an outline of what we're trying to achieve every year. And no one could, there's no penalty for not doing it, and it's, it's what we're striving to do. I, I think, again, it's, it's more of a, in the spirit of what this document's trying to do, I think the flexibility's there if we don't, you know, we have to live with, I mean, there are going to be some years we may have to tap the stabilization fund. That would certainly be going against a lot of what we're trying to do here, but that might be the fiscal reality that we're faced with, so.
Right.
So a, a, again, again, maybe it's just semantics, but I, as I read this policy, objective, goal, I see them all meaning the same thing in this document. And it is not binding unless this was proposed as a bylaw and adopted by the town, in which case we would have to hit each one of these.
Well, Mr. Malinowski said he was planning to, or I believe I heard him say he was planning to bring it to the town meeting to have them vote on it.
But not, not as a bylaw, requiring a two-thirds vote, simply as-
So what?
Policy statement.
Policy statement.
As a policy statement?
So that you could say, "Town meeting has expressed its support for these goals."
May I, through you, Mr. Chair? Just to dovetail off of what Ron is saying, technically, there is a difference between a policy and a goal. Technically. However, this is kind of an interchangeable document because if you look at it, we talk about a policy, but we're, we're using that word loosely in the sense that they're really goals. Because if you look at the very last paragraph, it states, "Annually, the town administrator shall include a statement in the comprehensive annual budget identifying Carver's progress toward meeting the above goals. In addition to the finance committee, shall include a similar statement in their annual reporting to town meeting." So, again.
The, the document ends by stating that it's all goals.
It's all goals.
Okay, any other, any other discussion?
Yes, I'll make it quick. On item eight, this post, other post-employment benefits, so-called OPEB liabilities that we have, I think it might be important for us to have the Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, come in and talk to us about that. He's had honcho when it comes to figuring out where we are, and I think he'd have a lot to contribute.
So you're suggesting we get him on the agenda at some point?
I, I think we really should, because I, I think, you know, it's, it's a good idea to be thinking about this, but we need to talk with, you know, someone who really knows about it. I think he would be the man.
But the, Mr. Chairman, through you, the selectmen did appoint, authorized me to create an OPEB study committee.
Yep.
So this is focused on the other post-employment benefits, so it's healthcare and, and life insurance. It's, it's not pension that this forty-nine million dollars is speaking to.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, I know the OPEB committee is, has had a meeting and is going to be looking to get on your docket at some point to make a presentation. That may be the first step, because again, it's dealing with healthcare, not pension.
Well, and I think that, okay, but I think the, the big package, the post-retirement benefits, we do need to have someone who's professional like Tom O'Brien come in and talk to us about it. I mean, the OPEB committee may be good people, but I, we need to hear from Tom as well, this is my opinion.
You're not, you're not in disagreement with number eight, you're just saying that-
I don't know, because I don't, I'm not well enough informed. I'd like to talk to a professional who really knows, like Tom O'Brien.
But Sarah, just as a point of conversation, part of the sentence paragraph states, "Including Carver will actively identify solutions and begin to fund other blah blah blah." Well, identifying solutions, wouldn't that be part of bringing Tom O'Brien in to kind of talk to us? So-
Why wouldn't we bring him in first so we get the facts, so that we can base those, our opinion?
What, prior to adopting that paragraph?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we want to, I think this is a very important paragraph to keep us, the OPEB and all of this unfunded liabilities, et cetera, on the forefront. So these, you know, it may not be totally accurate when it says liability is currently valued at forty-nine-six or what have you. I'm not sure what you're saying, you need more on, but I think it's very important to have this paragraph in here to keep it in the forefront.
Michael, isn't this opaque committee dealing with, it's not at all with this issue?
They're dealing with this issue, they're not dealing with anything with pensions.
Okay. So shouldn't we listen, shouldn't we have them in and listen them first and then move?
That would be my recommendation, and these numbers are part of our audit.
Then move to get Tom O'Brien in?
I mean, these are real numbers based upon what our audit is from our auditor that presented this information when we came back. And then we have to do an extra actuary and study for this that's underway. But again, I'm not sure how that affects the policy.
Right.
The policy is just that we need to study and look at all options, which we've created a committee to look at.
Right.
And to explore all options.
And I think we should maybe go forward at some point with Mr. O'Brien.
Right.
But I think that, I think it would be kind of disrespectful to the committee if we didn't listen to them first.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I personally don't have a problem having this included as part of the, the financial goals. I don't think it binds us to anything. It does suggest that we make contributions. And my concern before we start putting any money away is that we are, have an understanding of guidance. I mean, depending on who you talk to, some people say, "Don't worry about it until the county gets together and comes up with a solution similar to what they did for the pensions." Other people say, "Maybe we should start putting something aside now." So I think it is something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. But in the spirit of this document, I think it belongs there, is to demonstrate our commitment to address and resolve the issue. It, I mean, it could be the same forty-year solution they came up with for the pensions. We were given forty years to get to that forty-nine million, as opposed to within three years, or something of that nature. But I know, I had mentioned to Michael before about having Tom O'Brien come in because I, I've talked to Tom on that issue, and he is very knowledgeable, and I think he could, you, you may want to have him into the committee.
Right.
Just when?
And so forth, so. But I'm comfortable with that paragraph in there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the backdrop to these financial management policies is to help the town create financial discipline that has a document that transcends the members of the selectmen and the town administrator. So every year, this is what we work off of, subject to future changes. Second is, is let's not forget that this town is going to be going out to borrow a significant amount of money in the very near future. And what we're trying to strive for, and these help us get there as well as the OPEB, is to make a, make sure we have a high bond rating, which reduces our borrowing cost. So that's really, when we're looking at the objective and where we're heading, is, is that needs to be in, in the, in the back of your mind. Whatever we do from a financial standpoint, it's not what's good for today. It's what's good for the next twenty, thirty years in Carver. Because, again, we don't want to go out and borrow fifteen million dollars at a high bond rate.
Right.
Just to save a couple dollars today.
And, and I think also, when we go out to bond, if you can include some of these documents in our package to demonstrate the commitment that the town has made to financial discipline.
It will help.
It certainly, it certainly demonstrates that, you know, we may have our act together better than other towns do.
And in my experience in, in having bond ratings increase is that this document becomes a cornerstone for that, particularly when we're able to prove that we followed these bylaws, I mean, these, these policies.
Yeah, but don't say bylaws.
I know, apologize for the bylaws. And again, demonstrating that we're going to do what we said we were going to do is important from the, from the bond folks.
We did. No.
Okay, any-
No private conversation.
Oh, no, I was just asking-
Mr. Ward was asking you.
Tom O'Brien was in, talking to us, I don't know, a year, two years ago?
It was a different issue, though.
Different issue. Alright, any further discussion on the financial management policies package? Okay, you ready to vote? Alright. All those in favor of supporting the adoption of the Carver financial management policies, say aye.
Aye.
As amended.
As amended. You're right, as amended, in several places.
Aye.
Alan, you voted yes?
Oh, I said aye.
With reservations, I'll go along.
Okay. Unanimous support on that, Elaine? Okay? Alright, and the final document, the agenda policy. Okay? Alan, you have your suggested policy in writing, so I think we should go to that first.
Do you want to have the motion and second first?
I'll make a motion that we approve the board of selectmen agenda policy as amended, in anticipation that we're going to make amendments.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, again, I went back, and the only thing I could find on agenda policy was a memorandum that was signed by Michael Donald when he was chairman back in July tenth, two thousand and twelve. And I thought it was missing one item, and I wanted to change another one. The item that was missing, and it's added, is number two. "All members of the board of selectmen as elected, representatives of the town of Carver, may submit items for agenda. Every effort shall be made to ensure agenda items submitted by board members will be included in the next scheduled meeting of the board of selectmen, providing the item has been requested with sufficient time to meet the requirements of the open meeting law." Then my other recommended change on this is a change to citizens' participation. Currently, we only have citizens' participation at the end of the meeting. And I know it's gone into some changes over the years. But during the election process, talk to enough people. And one of the frustrations some people had, and, and I could share it because I had the same frustrations when I was out in the audience, is you don't, they don't get a chance to voice their opinion on agenda items before they're already acted upon by the board. As it stands now, the board goes ahead and deals with each agenda item, and then they can go ahead, the public can go ahead and voice a concern about it, but by then it's too late. So I made this recommendation, citizen participation. There should be two sessions of citizens' participation at each regularly scheduled meeting of the board of selectmen. The first session will be after the pledge of allegiance and any announcements made prior to the town administrator notes. The first session will be ten minutes in length, and no speaker may speak more than three minutes. Speakers must confine comments to items listed on the agenda for that particular meeting. This will allow citizens to, to provide input to the board prior to the board entering into discussion on various agenda items. The second citizen participation will be at the end of the public portion of the meeting. This session will be up to fifteen minutes, and each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes. Those citizens who did not speak during the first session will be given a priority to speak. Citizens may speak on any, any item they wish to, such as requesting an item to be placed on future agenda meetings, future meeting agendas. Personalities, politics, personal attacks, personal issues, and pending litigation are not appropriate material and will be ruled out of order by the chair. The chair is authorized to issue warnings to the offending parties and to determine if requests for future agenda items are appropriate.
Comments? Discussion?
I think there was just one technical thing, time was left out of after-
Yeah, I added that in, so that's changed.
That should be included, but otherwise, I'm comfortable with the changes.
I think the changes are positive. When we first implemented the citizens' participation back, what was it, a year ago, a two meeting? It's two. We had set the template, if you will, and had said that we were going to go through and see how it works. So I agree about the citizens' participation, that once the board's, the vote is made, you know, people don't have, you know, it's too late. So I think this is a great addition to, to the policy.
Anybody else?
I guess I'd just be curious of what, if Mr. Malinowski had any thoughts?
Just going through it, is we have a deadline of four P.M. on Wednesday. I know in the past, they were, prior to my arrival, agendas were being changed at eleven fifty-nine on Fridays, and that's not helpful to anybody. So that's in there, and I think that's important. I guess my only other comment is, is I would just turn this into a policy statement as well, so this would be like policy statement number four from the board, when we get rid of all the letterhead. And so that's, you know, and, and my intent would be is that we keep a book of the policies, one, two, three, four, and then, you know, effective this date, and then they can have, if you will, your, your bible of policies.
Okay, anybody else? I'm just glad to see that any selectman can submit an agenda item. And, and I'm assuming that it will not be taken off. If, if we came into the meeting and there was an inappropriate agenda item that a member of the board of selectmen put on there, it'd be very easy for the board to vote it, to delete it. So.
Do you, do you want to add that to this policy?
No, because we can, we would be looking at it, and if it was something that jumped out at you, you'd want to do it anyway. And I, I agree with the town administrator's suggestion. I, I think it's important, too, that we follow the same rules as the citizens on submitting agenda items. Try to submit them before four o'clock Wednesday. In other words, selectmen doesn't come in at quarter of twelve on Friday morning with an agenda item. That makes it difficult for Elaine and people in the office. So we follow the same time, time period that the citizens do.
Yes, just a quick, no, technical question. There is a rule, though, that allows, if some emergency or some crucial issue comes up after that deadline, is that there is a rule that allows an emergency item to be placed on the agenda?
Yes, anything within forty-eight hours of an agenda can be added. The Attorney General does make a recommendation that within that forty hours, if you know there's going to be a change, they're still included on a revised agenda. An example is in the executive session tonight, I've added the Southern Sky Renewable Project under executive session. Again, that's within forty-eight hours, so you do have the ability of dealing with emergencies, and you just need to amend the agenda accordingly where possible.
Okay, any further discussion? Ready for the vote? Okay, all those in favor of supporting the new, the agenda policy as amended, please say aye.
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 Unanimous? Okay, next.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I just want to note that we were supposed to go seven oh five to seven ten for the, for that section of the, so just, just an observation.
Blame the new guy.
Could we take a two, one-minute break?
One-minute break?
One minute.
Um, I, I'll tell you what, if, if we're going to take a break, can we let the governance committee speak first? And then we can take a break?
They're going to be on for half an hour.
Probably.
Yeah, well, if it's Stephen Gray, it could be.
You're not on the clock, are you?
Alright, take a, take a fast break, alright. We'll give them one-minute break, folks, if you- We, we have one little item. Do we need to wait for Elaine here? Yep, here comes Elaine. We have one more little item here that I omitted. I didn't omit, I just didn't see it. Schedule presentation with the town council on open meeting, ethics, and public records. Michael?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, two things. One is the, our town clerk has scheduled two meetings with the Ethics Commission to come down and provide ethics training for all committees, all staff members, anyone that's interested. It's about a, how long is the session?
An hour and a half.
About an hour and a half, and, and those dates are publicized, so I encourage everyone to do that. I also encourage the selectmen to go do that as well. Because by you doing that, when we bring in town council to update the new selectmen on open meeting law and public records, they can focus on those two things and kind of just give the quick version of the ethics, because you already get the detailed version. So we do need to schedule a time for this. My suggestion is just giving the, this is about a two-hour presentation that he'd look, like to do, is maybe to wait the after-town meeting, but that's up to you as to, I mean, it is important, we should do it. Just trying to juggle the schedules with everybody, so I'll take your lead as to whether you want to do it before- Just trying to juggle the schedules with everybody, so I'll take your lead as to whether you wanna do it before or after-town meeting. Again, just the next month or five weeks are gonna be very cramped.
Would it, but it's not intended just for the new selectmen, it'd be for all the selectmen?
For, yeah, for all the selectmen.
Michael, I responded to Lynn's email by saying I wanted to sign up for the, I think it was the twenty-something, whatever the Monday one was. Nineteenth, thank you. So I'm gonna be going then.
Well, but this is different.
That's just the ethics.
That's just the ethics part, so, uh, my suggestion, I would agree, wait till after-town meeting and pick, pick an off Tuesday, when we're not meeting, to, to do it.
Definitely after.
And the meetings that you have, Lynn, is the nineteenth and when? Twenty-eighth? And we're encouraging the selectman, Michael, to go to one of those two also.
Correct.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to, 'cause I'm working one day, and one, the, one on the twenty-eighth is convocation, and-
Oh, yeah.
I'm not gonna miss that.
Don't miss that. Okay, um, all right, is enough on that? We're all set? All right, uh, with much delay here, we've thrown at the Governance Committee and the Chair, Steve Gray. Welcome up, Steve, and would you like to, uh, do a little presentation for us? The Governance Committee has been working very hard, early morning meetings, and, um, Mr. Gray, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, is the Chairman of our Governance Committee. And he's going to give us an update. And Mr. Cotter is Chairman of the Finance Committee, and he's also on the Governance Committee.
Good evening.
Does that mic work? Steve, is it close enough? Yep, okay.
The Governance Committee was formed as a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, with the express purpose of examining the organizational structure of the town of government, of the, uh, town of government here in Carver, and also to make appropriate recommendations with regard to how best to achieve cost efficiency and operational efficiency. I'll try to zip through this as quickly as I can, but as the Chair alluded to, we've had many meetings, and we've come to a number of decisions and recommendations which are significant. First by way of introduction-
Mr. Gray, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're gonna have, that's for the people at home, and, and I can barely hear you, so.
Okay, so I'm going to speak up.
Thank you.
All right. So first, by way of background introduction of the committee members. First, we have a current Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Dick Ward, who is a member of the Governance Committee. We also have Chairman Emeritus of the Board of Selectmen, James Grimes. We have as well Chairman Emeritus of the Board of Selectmen, Jack Angley, and sitting to my right, current Finance Chairman, John Cotter. Standing astride this group of distinguished gentlemen, who I think you will recognize and acknowledge as having come from opposite sides of the political aisle on many issues, is yours truly. I have been for some time the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and as I think you all know, we have been involved over the years in a number of controversial cases. Most recently, of course, the Great Meadow Drive Solar Case, which as a result of discussions and negotiations fostered by the ZBA, has eventually led to an amicable resolution saving the town six figures in legal fees. Part of that case involved having to chair three public hearings over seven hours. They were contentious and heavily attended by members of the public, and perhaps it was as a result of seeing me walk out of there unbloodied and unbruised, that the committee members of the Governance Committee decided to choose me as their chairman, and it is as Chairman of the Governance Committee that I speak to you tonight. At the outset, allow me to say that over our nine meetings to date and sixteen hours of fact-finding and deliberation, the committee members were uniformly impressed with the dedication and competency of the employees who work for the Town of Carver. These folks are not only dedicated to each other and work well with each other within the walls of this building, but also deliver excellent service to members of the public. And, uh, we feel that we're fortunate, as a committee, we felt that the town is very fortunate to have these folks working for it. But it is also important to remember that in many cases, the way things have been done in the Town of Carver, have been done that way for many years, generations even. And in this time of tight budgetary constraints, it appears now at long last that the time has come to talk about significant change here in the town of government, in, in the Town of Carver, in the manner in which government is delivered to its people, and to support those changes, and to welcome a new day. And perhaps, just perhaps, that new day dawned with the Governance Committee itself. For in a town that has experienced recently fractured voting, official investigations, and political incivility, the Governance Committee was able to achieve something that I think is remarkable, unanimity. Every vote taken on every initiative and every proposal was unanimous, despite the fact, again, as I said, that these folks who comprise the Governance Committee come from very different sides, or have historically come from very different sides of the political aisle. Now, I might add that this was not easy. We often had disagreements, we had to talk out our differences. But I think we all, as we sat in that room, realized that the proposals that we are talking about have the potential of changing the face of town government. And all of us understand the gravity of the decisions that we are making. We weighed our decisions very, very carefully. And tonight, we, the Governance Committee, speaking through me, speak to you now with one voice, one voice. First, we recommend that the Police Chief selection process be changed going forward. Now, we're all aware of what happened with regard to our former police chief. That process was not well-handled, and make no mistake about it, it left the town with a black eye. This was a man who was universally liked, was regarded as well-qualified, a man who the town sent to the FBI Academy for specialized training, who was paid during his absence his full salary, and rightly so. And also additional money had to be paid to an administrative sergeant back here at home, so that that individual could handle matters, uh, that were coming across his desk on an interim basis. It has been estimated by the Governance Committee that during this time period, when the training was going on and the administrative differential was being paid to the sergeant, that the town had to shell out approximately twenty thousand dollars. That's money that's gone. Also, it's important to remember that going forward, it makes it more difficult for the Town of Carver to attract professional and qualified help when we have a selection process like the last one that broke down. So we recommend a new four-step selection process. First, we recommend that a screening committee be formed of five members. The town administrator will choose these five members. Four will come from the community, one will be an expert with public safety expertise. Second, from that, uh, committee, a slate of three preferred candidates will be chosen. Third, the town administrator will then, in his best professional and managerial judgment, choose one of those three. And that final selection will be presented to the Board of Selectmen for ratification. The beauty of this is that it requires input and buy-in from everyone. First, from members of the community who will be made up of this, uh, who will comprise this, uh, selection, uh, committee, or screening committee, if you will. Second, it will require input and buy-in from the town administrator, who will need to work on a managerial level with the new police chief, especially with regard to budgetary issues and union contract issues. And third, and certainly not least, it will require input and buy-in from the Board of Selectmen, from you folks, who, after all, represent the, uh, people of the Town of Carver. We feel that there are appropriate checks and balances in place with regard to this recommendation, and we urge you to consider it seriously. This is a, a process that is not unusual in terms of how other towns and cities handle it. And, uh, again, we felt strongly that this would, uh, avoid the situation that happened the last time, when the board attempted to arrive at a decision with regard to what it was going to do with its former police chief. Now, insofar as contract renewals are concerned, we know that the police chief serves for three years per contract. What we're suggesting there is that after two and a half years of that contract has passed, that the town administrator execute a performance review, and then decide, after that performance review is completed, whether in his professional and managerial judgment, the police chief should be reappointed. If he decides yes, then that reappointment's, uh, uh, referral will then go to you folks, and again, you'll have the opportunity to vote up or down. If he decides in his best professional and managerial judgment that he should not be reappointed, then the matter would go back to that screening committee and go through that four-step process. Understanding, of course, that the, uh, incumbent police chief, if he's not felt to be someone that the town administrator would want to recommend for renewal of the contract, could always reapply within the ambit of that, uh, four-step selection process that I outlined initially. Second, we recommend appointment of the Treasurer-Tax Collector going forward, instead of having that individual elected. Now, before anybody gets upset about this, I do wanna say that not only did we meet, by the way, with the police chief, but we also met with the current Treasurer-Tax Collector. And she's on board with this recommendation. We also want to make it very clear up top that we have no desire to imply, infer, or recommend, in this case, that her term that she's currently serving be interrupted. We want to see her serve out her elected term. However, when that elected term is over, we recommend that the town move to an appointed position for a couple of very important reasons. First, this person is responsible for the day-to-day financial operations of the Town of Carver. It's a very important and responsible position that she holds currently. It's one, by all accounts, that she seems to be doing quite well currently. But it's also a highly technical position that requires specialized education and qualifications. And we don't, we felt, the committee felt, that we don't want to have this position subject to politics or the electoral process. It's not a, a situation where we're gonna be trying to elect someone who has, um, a, a more general educational background or a more general experience. We need someone with specialized qualifications and certifications. So we don't wanna be put in a situation where one day we might be choosing among candidates who might be a real estate broker, a farmer, or a mechanic. We want to search out the best and most qualified, uh, person for this job for the Town of Carver. Again, other towns do it this way. It would not be unusual for us to move to an appointed position. And we recommend that, uh, the board and eventually town meeting seriously consider moving to the appointed, uh, process for the Treasurer-Tax Collector. And insofar as the appointment process is concerned, we would recommend that the town administrator, in consultation with the Chairs of the Finance Committee, as well as the Capital Outlay Committee, the two major financial committees, uh, put their heads together and, um, discuss the various candidates who might apply for that position. Eventually, the town administrator would be asked to, uh, decide who his choice would be, after reviewing, uh, the candidates with the two chairs, and then eventually his choice would come to the BOS for ratification. Third, we recommend that the DPW Commissioners be abolished. Now, the evidence that we've taken at the Governance Committee demonstrates to us that they seldom meet now. When they do attempt to meet, uh, they often cannot get a quorum. We have spoken with both the, uh, interim Superintendent John Woods, and also the former Superintendent of the DPW, Bill Hallianen, who both were quite firm in telling us that they felt that they do not need any oversight from DPW Commissioners in terms of their day-to-day operations of the department. And, uh, you know, people, if they have an issue about whether their street has been plowed, or if a pothole needs to be filled, they're not thinking about calling the DPW Commissioners, they're thinking about calling either the office over the DPW or at Town Hall. And I might add that, that recently I was out driving around and saw a street sign down, uh, near my property, and the first thing I thought of was, gee, I gotta call the DPW office. I wasn't thinking about calling the Commissioners. Within hour, I might add, they were there, and they, they put that street sign back up. So this, we think, is, uh, a, a simple, uh, change that needs to be made. It will also save the town an annual stipend, collective stipend of fifteen hundred dollars, because these folks for basically not meeting or barely meeting at all get paid five hundred dollars a year for the privilege. Next, we recommend that the, uh, Board of Health go from elected to appointed. That was the consensus of the Governance Committee, that there are many qualified people in town who do not want to subject themselves to the, uh, political winds of electoral politics. And we hear frequently from the Chair, uh, when he announces the various openings that are available. We know that there are issues filling those seats, and, uh, we feel that going forward, we can tap into the expertise that is available, or would be available conceivably, and theoretically, if we moved from taking this board out of the electoral, uh, arena and putting it into an appointed situation. We can also save, again, on stipends, these folks, uh, are getting five hundred dollars a year, so collectively, over the course of one year, fifteen hundred dollars. Next, with regard to the Conservation Agents' position. First, it was, uh, the consensus of the Governance Committee that the former agent who sits among you tonight has done a, uh, an excellent job over a long period of time managing her role as the agent, building bridges with the agricultural community, and lending her expertise in grant-writing, all in an effort to, um, give that department the appropriate profile and professionalism that it requires. No one realizes that more than I. But it was also the consensus of, of the committee that this agent's job could be changed from full-time to part-time, with some important caveats. The Conservation Agents' position is first and foremost, in the view of the Governance Committee, one which involves conservation issues and interaction with, uh, folks who are, uh, needing, uh, relief at the Conservation Commission. So that would be the primary job description of the part-time Conservation Agent. But we also felt strongly that the contributions made by the former Conservation Agent, uh, insofar as grant-writing was concerned, were critical going forward for the Town of Carver. So we recommend that a specific line item be placed in the budget, setting aside money that will be allocated specifically to third-party grant-writing. In other words, we hire someone to do this grant-writing, to continue the efforts of the former Conservation Agent, to bring money into town and to, uh, do what we can to, uh, achieve, uh, both- both state and federal monies where appropriate. And we're not just talking here about conservation grants, we're also talking potentially about planning grants as well. So this person would be working across departments for grant-writing purposes. Next, we recommend that by July 1, 2014, the Department of Public Works and the Town Facilities Department be consolidated. Now, we are not prepared, nor will we make any recommendations to you folks about personnel. Who should be the head of a combined or consolidated department? Who should be the deputy or anything like that? That is beyond our expertise. However, the reason for the recommendation, on a structural basis, is so that certain cost and operational efficiencies can be achieved. Now, we have asked the town administrator for some data with regard to this. We've seen his diagram in terms of how he would like to see a consolidated DPW and Town Facilities Department to look like. And I can tell you all that, based on his numbers, it would appear that, for the first year anyway, a consolidated DPW and Town Facilities Department would save us approximately Not an insignificant sum of money. I might also add that, going forward, there would be other cost efficiencies achieved. Future cost efficiencies in terms of consolidation of purchasing and supplies as between these two departments. And remember, folks, these two departments basically have a similar mission anyway. Their mission is to preserve the infrastructure of the town. So it seemed to us to be an appropriate marriage between these two departments. And they cooperate pretty much on an informal basis with each other now, anyway. So if we can bring them together under a more formalized structure, and save money straight away, as well as money going forward, which I'll address in a moment, we thought that this was an appropriate thing to recommend to you folks. Now, in terms of those future cost efficiencies, we have learned that if there's an HVAC issue in one of the town's buildings, that has to be outsourced, because we don't have anybody in-house that can do that. And that's at the rate of $100 or more per hour. So we're hoping that if we can consolidate and utilize the collective talents of these people, and maybe designate one person to perhaps go out and get some additional education and certification, and save us some money on the HVAC end, then why not do it? Also, very important for me and the rest of the committee members, was developing, through the consolidated department, that we're recommending a cohesive energy policy. We have received a report from a consultant, whose last name I always butcher, it begins with P, what is it, Mr. Melanowski?
Panadosi.
Who has estimated that if we can develop a cohesive and coherent energy policy for the town's buildings, that we may be able to save as much as 25% a year. And it, again, seemed obvious to us, that if we could consolidate, consolidate these efforts to develop a cohesive energy policy under one umbrella, i.e. the new DPW slash Town Facilities Department, for lack of a better title, then we should be moving in that direction. Now, that's part one, under this particular recommendation. Part two is as follows. The Governance Committee felt that there is yet another department in town that should be fit under this umbrella of departments, dealing with town infrastructure, and that's the School Departments of Building and Grounds arm. So we recommend that, over the next year, the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Town Administrator work together to develop a consolidation plan that will bring them in to the umbrella as well. I'm talking about the School Buildings and Grounds Department. And we've met with the head of the School Buildings and Grounds Department, and we have also met with the Superintendent of Schools, and have discussed this with them. They're open to the idea. They realize some more discussions need to be had, as do we, the Governance Committee, and we think that this is an aspirational goal that should be worked towards between July 1 of 2014 and July 1, 2015. Remember that the concern here is not only to deliver appropriate and professional services to the public, but also to protect infrastructure. If we don't protect infrastructure, we're going to pay down the road. So if we can work together, have these departments consolidated, have lines of authority developed by way of an appropriate organizational chart, which I know the town administrator's been working on, and achieve both cost and labor efficiencies in these times of tight budgets, again, why not work in that direction? One more. We recommend various inspectional departments in the Town of Carver be consolidated as well. Again, let me state at the top that we are making no specific personnel recommendations. Our recommendation for consolidation of these inspectional departments, again, is based upon a cost and labor efficiency analysis. Let me also add that, based on what we're suggesting here, we have been advised by the town administrator, that there will be no additional cost to the town of government on a managerial level. In other words, if we're going to give some people in Town Hall additional responsibilities under this umbrella of inspectional departments, which I will identify for you all in a moment, they're not going to be seeking more money, despite the fact that their responsibilities will increase. And I think that goes back to what I was saying at the beginning about how people in town here do sacrifice to make government work. They're good people. Now, we see that the Department of Planning, the Conservation Department, and the Building Department should be consolidated into what has been labeled the Department of Permitting Environment and Planning, PEP. And based on numbers given to us thus far, the cost efficiencies achieved as a result of consolidation of these departments would, in the first year, save us in the vicinity of $40,000. That's for the first year. And again, this is by consolidating departments, reducing and eliminating redundancy in positions, and also delivering what we hope will be better and improved services to the members of the public. Right now, if somebody goes in to the town and is looking for a permit to be issued, and they're not there at the right time, the window might be down. Other times, the person who needs to be there and can answer the question is not. So we're hoping that by consolidating, not only are we going to save money going forward, but we're also going to encourage cross-training, so that one person in the Building Department will be able to answer a question in the Health Department if that health person is not around, and thereby deliver, as I said, better services to the public. Something important to me was discussed as well at the Governance Committee, and I'll just add this as an addendum to my remarks about consolidation of the inspectional departments. We have, in this town, a number of quasi-judicial boards. We have the Conservation Commission, we have the Planning Board, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals. Nothing that we recommended as a governance committee is going to affect the independence of those quasi-judicial boards. They will still be allowed to hear their cases, they'll still be allowed to make their decisions without interference, and write those decisions, again, without any influence attempted to be exercised on them by administrators within this consolidated department. So although you may eventually see and may already have seen some of the schematics that have come out about consolidation and how these departments might fit together, this is not going to affect the operation of these quasi-judicial boards. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's laid out for everybody. So these are our initial recommendations, and as you can see, they are significant. They will change the way town government has operated previously. These are recommendations that we bring to you all. We bring them to you, again, unanimously, and we hope that you will consider them with the, with the appropriate foresight, not only for what these recommendations might be able to give to the Town of Carver now, but also the benefits that might be yielded for the Town of Carver going forward.
Thank you, Steve. Excellent job. John, would you have anything to add to Steve's comments?
I just wanted to say that the members of the Governance Committee all have many years of service with the Town of Carver, and that was really critical in looking at how departments worked, having in-depth knowledge of some of the challenges they face. But we all came around to operational efficiencies. How do, how do we deliver more services and cost the taxpayer less money? That was kind of the goal, and I think that we accomplished that.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent presentation. Do we, we have, the Governance Committee is going to have a public hearing, right, Steve?
Yes, we, we understand that, that these proposals are significant and deserve to be vetted, not only by you people, but also by the public. So it was our collective judgment that we should have a meeting, and I think that we're going to probably be having it a week from tonight in these chambers, and we will attempt to answer whatever questions or concerns members of the public or you folks might have. I've tried to be as brief as possible. There's a lot that's gone into this, there's a lot of detail that I've left out. I've just tried to sketch the, the overall outline of this. So absolutely, one week from tonight, I expect we'll all be back here, and we'll be happy to answer whatever questions anybody might have.
So, rather than get into, I had a couple of questions that I jotted down, but we'll save that, we'll come next week if we want to.
I think probably everybody on the Board might have questions, so I was thinking maybe it would be more appropriate for us to go to that hearing and ask questions.
That's fine.
And then have it as an item, whatever we were going to do for action, do at our next Selectmen's meeting. So you will have a chance to address the Governance Committee. Okay? Okay. Thank you very much, Steve, and thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Town Administrator's update. And we are an hour and 20 minutes behind here. Okay. Go for it. No, that's not your, that was our doing, Steve, right in the beginning.
Tried to be quick.
You were fine. That was great.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to the, to the Vice Chair, how much time do I have before I lose the coffee?
Twenty minutes. I gave you a half-hour leeway on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, the financial team here in Carver have been working diligently with all of the department heads and with the superintendent and the school business manager to work on developing a budget that is balanced, but also addresses the service needs of the Town of Carver. With that, and with the implementation of the financial management policies, and with earlier direction from the Board of Selectmen, primarily focused on the, to make sure that we had enough police resources to help take a small dent out of the heroin issue, we have put together a balanced budget. With that, we've also changed the format to hopefully provide more transparency, not that there wasn't any before, but just to simplify, where possible, the budget process so that anyone can review this from one sheet and understand what the finances of the Town of Carver are. So with that, I'm going to pass this document around. This, this pro forma is based upon a 20-year, is designed for a 20-year pro forma that's really focused on looking at the long-term impacts of the significant borrowing that this town's going to have to do. I will say, from the get-go, we have not finalized the out-years yet, so there's still some adjustments we need to make into the formula. What I want to call your attention to, in the document that you have, and that I'm going to have on the screen, and is on the screen, is the grade area, which is the 2015 budget. And this is broken down into three areas. The first area is the revenue received by the town. The second area is the expenses, starting with the shared expenses, then what's available for the school and for the town, and then ending with the capital stabilization plan that is proposed as a modification to the building stabilization plan. One of the highlights that I want to, that I want to call to your attention right off at the very beginning, is that with some of the revised shared cost approaches, and also taking the first step towards creating this town-wide facilities department, the net of this budget, I believe, is going to provide an extra $188,000, $138,000 to the school, based upon, in addition to the budget that they approved last evening. And with that, there's still more work that needs to be done with the school. But I do want to talk about their presentation, because I think it was very key to helping us finalize this document and receive their, their final budget. In their presentation last evening, is, they were originally looking at reducing teachers and personnel down by 24 people. That has been reduced down to about 12. In that analysis, they were very focused on their priorities, that should additional funding become available, that they wanted to add an additional class or additional support for their third and fourth grade classrooms. That is their priority, that's what they stated last night. I believe with the numbers that we're providing tonight, that these numbers, if adopted, will allow for that additional capacity. Now, one of the other reasons, as we went from the 24 number down on the school side to, to reducing it down to 12, and again, we're hoping to get it below that, is that we started to look at the restructuring of, of the budget process, and what the short-term impacts are versus the long-term gains. Sometimes we need to suffer a little pain, if you will, in order to develop a sustainable budget, consistent with our financial management policies. And in doing so, in this budget, you're going to see an area where we've established a, a fund that's going to be for one-time cost tied into unemployment. And without that fund being set up, according to what Pat Mohar stated last night, the school department would have to lay off an additional four to five people. So again, it's, this fund is kind of set up as a restructuring cost, and it's So again, it's, this fund is kind of set up as a restructuring cost, and it's taking some money out of free cash to put into an unemployment account because, again, there are going to be some pains in this budget. But instead of laying off more people to fund unemployment, we're pulling, the proposal is to pull money out to fund that. So again, that saves about four to five people, according to what the school department mentioned last night. I do believe with this budget that in the long-term, it puts the town on a much more financial, secure, and sustainable process going forward. And let me get into some of the details. Shown on the screen right here, this is the revenue for the town. And I want to go through these areas and, and kind of focus on what this chart actually accomplishes. So the net of it in FY 2015, we are showing a total revenue coming to the town of $36.9 million. And Meg, why don't you stop up here in case I, if there's anything else you want to address as I'm going through this, if you don't mind, thank you. When we look at that, that's broken up into about two-thirds is through property tax, and that also includes personal property. And the other third is through state revenues and other revenues that we have available to us, including local receipts. So following the cursor, this top section is the tax revenue, which is $21.046 million. That includes $20 million, which was raised last year. It includes a 2.5% increase, which is utilizing our full levy capacity. The real estate, we have broken down into two components. The first one is $70,000, which is new real estate development that has happened in the, in the town. That could be a one or two commercial buildings that were put up. It could be new houses that were built. It could be major additions that were put, put in town. That $70,000 is the assessors' number. In addition to that, we have $360,000. The majority of that is coming from the improvements that N-Star has been doing as part of their capital plan to improve their transmission capacity. Now, that is a big number. That is not a sustainable number. We will not have that number every year. That number for personal property, if you will, is like a roller coaster. It goes up and down year to year. So when the, the building committees started to make the recommendation of utilizing that money to fund building projects in town, I believe that was a very wise choice to use that. You'll see later that I'm expanding that scope, so it will also include capital outlay equipment beyond just buildings. But that item is the one where you want to focus your, because it's, it's so unstable, if you will, that you want to utilize that money to go into a stabilization fund or reserve fund. And just to point out, in 2016, in looking at a 10-year average and taking out the outliers, the personal property number is around $55,000. So again, average, taking out the outliers, is 55. This year, we've got 360. We also have the Southern Sky pilot agreement, which will bring $45,000 into the town. So that's our total tax revenue. Then from there, we receive state aid, and that's $11.5 million, based upon the House Ways and Means budget as of 4/9/14. There is some possibility that number may go up another $25 per student. It may go up, you know, for a total of $50,000. But unfortunately, the legislature sometimes doesn't make those decisions until July, which doesn't help us for a budget process.
Excuse me, Michael, we, we talked about this earlier, but how much has that $11 million figure changed since we heard the first whispers of what the budget might look like back in January and February?
I don't think it changed significantly. I think in January, year over year, I believe, was a $50,000 increase. But since that time, Meg, I, I know the number went up, but the offsets went, the number went up and the offsets went up too. So the net of that is that that's the revenue component of the state, and then I'll get down here and then you see this is the offs, offsets.
I guess I was just getting to the issue of whether or not we have the information early enough, if we wanted to have town meeting prior to June, that the numbers are solid enough that there's no reason not to pursue that.
In my experience, that is correct for most years. Again, there have been some anomalies where the state does provide some unusual money, but it's, it's not on a regular basis. Meg, do you have that number?
Actually, from, from governors to the House Ways and Means, which we're using, governors was 100,000 lower on revenues, so House Ways and Means was 100,000 higher on revenues, but then correspondingly, exactly 100,000 in the assessment, so it washes.
Okay. So no change?
Yep.
Okay. Our local receipts, we have down here $1.8 million. The Board of Selectmen last month took some bold action and looked and analyzed its fees compared to all the towns and what our costs for services are. And you, you did make some changes. We have incorporated a portion of that new revenue in that $1.8 million, but we also need to see a trend line too. So just because we've raised fees doesn't mean we're automatically going to have more money. Some people may reduce their services. We have to see how that plays out. So our other revenues is $13.8 million. From there, we get into other transfers from other funds to offset numbers. The first two items is through the enterprise fund for the North Carver Water District and the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund. As part of an enterprise fund, in the business world, it's, it's more considered a, a business unit within a larger company. So it has its own profit and loss statement, its own balance sheet. In essence, that's what an enterprise fund does. What these numbers account for is the indirect rates that the town personnel put into the project to manage those projects. Now, that's revenue coming out of those two enterprise funds, but for full disclosure, as we know, those funds are in a deficit anyway. So that means we're just putting it back in there, but from an accounting standpoint, it shows the true cost. The next item is the ambulance revolving fund. That's self-explanatory. Then we get into the capital stabilization fund, which is the $1.1 million. Now, this is money that is somehow, is double counted in here, but it's also double offset. And the reason why we're doing that is just to show you how that flows in and out of this number. So it's added twice and subtracted twice. So as we come up with our capital cost, which includes the debt service, the lease payments that we have on equipment, and the funds that we're proposing to pay for projects this year, that would be a transfer out of the capital stabilization funds. So here's your transfer from that fund. There's still some money left in there, but this is what we're transferring out, and there'll be a corresponding expense for it lower down, down the sheet. Some smaller funds that are transferred from the Energy and the Cemetery Trust Funds. And then we have the $660,000, which is what we have left over for free cash. That is put into the budget, and you see it's, it's designated as for capital and one-time cost. That money is going to be programmed or is proposed to be programmed to offset $300,000 of snow and ice, to offset $100 extra thousand for unemployment, again, establishing that fund that is part of the restructuring cost. It's also going to fund $180,000 of the North Carver Water District, and there's a Chapter 90 deficit of $49,000, which I'll get to in a second. So again, it's, we want to be very clear for the bond rating agencies that we're using one-time money for one-time funds. We will get a demerit, if you will, if we start to use one-time money for operating costs. They look at that as poor management. So again, going back to, we're going to transfer in $2.4 million, so our total revenue for the town is $36.9 million. Any questions on the revenue side? That's the fun part. Now, let's get to the, to the expense side. Okay. Cherry sheet offsets and state and county assessments, these are mandatory costs that we have no control over. The state gives us money and the state takes it away, and they say, you shall pay for this. This can include everything from mosquito, Plymouth County mosquitoes control, to, to many other offsets the state has. This is the $49,504 to clear the books on some Chapter 90 funds that were never received from the town going back for many years. This is something that Mr. Adams was working through. I believe the number at one point was larger, around $70,000. $70,000. In essence, what happens is the Chapter 90 is a reimbursable grant from the state. You have to fill out an application. It's for Project X. You pay for Project X, and then after you pay for it, you submit the receipts to the state and ask them to reimburse that. And that process could take six months. For whatever reason, some funds didn't come out that the town fronted, and because we never got the reimbursement, then the town is authorized, is required, because we've booked it as, as an expense with an offsetting revenue, that it becomes a liability for the town, and it affects our free cash number at the end of every year. Anything else on that, Meg, that I missed?
Nope, that's everything.
Thanks.
Excuse me. So we lost money because we didn't submit paperwork? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I don't want to say we lost money. It's just that there was some clerical error somewhere in the process. And this goes back many years. I know that Mr. Adams, my understanding is Mr. Adams was, was working on this for a long time. He was able to get it down about $20,000, but there's still this liability on the book. So where I had the $660,000 in free cash, we're looking to clear this error off of our books.
But it is because we didn't submit to...
Again, I don't know if it was, it was...
It goes back like at least five, at least five years. So it's really hard to determine because it's...
Oh, it's hard to determine.
It's really hard to determine because there could be a number of factors. I want to say that, that John may have said at one point that there was like a project that was started and they front-loaded expenses, but then at some point, it wasn't eligible. So it was sort of one of those things, you had to spend the money to get the project started, but then they found out later on it was ineligible. And if it's, has to do with the fiscal year, norm, like if you did it before the end of the fiscal year, you could shift the expense to the budget. But if it happened, if they found out that it was ineligible afterwards, you wouldn't be able to shift it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And one of the things we're trying to do is, is, an error was made, just like when we had the auditor in here. We can spend a lot of time figuring out how it was made, and we want to know how it was made. We want to make sure that going forward, we don't repeat the mistake. But, you know, I don't want to go back and try to blame anybody. It's just, this is an issue we got to deal with and move forward.
Not blame, just to, so you can put procedures in place so it doesn't happen again.
Correct.
I mean, absolutely not blame. You don't even know when or how it happened. So...
So that is one of the items that is being proposed to be funded out of the $660,000. Here's our snow and ice deficit. The enterprise fund deficit.
Excuse me, Michael, on the snow and ice deficit, that's for the current year, our overage, and haven't we had in the past a tradition where we would just sort of let that carry over to next year's cherry sheet and take the hit on next year's budget? So this is a change in the approach?
That is one approach to do it. It really depends upon the policy of the town. You do have the flexibility of rolling that over to next year's, but you're forcing next year to pay for this year's bill.
No, but I'm saying, in town, that's the way we have been doing it.
That's correct.
So this is a change in the way we've, we're handling the, the, the snow and ice deficit.
Correct.
The DOR actually prefers us to, to clean it up before the end of the fiscal year.
I'm sorry, Meg, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The DOR actually prefers that we do it this way to, to clean it up before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, so technically, it is a change in policy, but it's, it's a preferred direction for managing our funds. Again...
I, I, I think in the past, the idea was just to sort of cross your fingers and try to get as good a budget as you could for the current year and hope that money drops out of heaven next year to, to make up for the, the hit. So I think this is a better way to handle it.
So the next item is the North Carver Water District. This is the deficit that's proposed for 2015. Again, this is primarily related to capital components for the, for the project. The North Carver Water District generates enough revenue to cover its operating expenses, and there are some efficiencies we can look at in the future, but the debt service is not covered by the, by the revenues coming in. The town for the next dozen-plus years will be, have to subsidize the project unless there's additional development faster than we anticipate. And then we've got the Southeast Regional Assessment, a small number. Moving down, we then come into the transferred other funds, which includes, this is the number of the $1.85 million that will be transferred to the capital stabilization fund. I'll go through and explain that number, what it breaks down to. Again, it's at the bottom of your sheet, but just remember, $1.85 million is what is proposed to be allocated this year into that fund. We have the North Carver Water District, where they receive 50% of the diff and 50% of the pilot from Southern Sky. Right now, what we have here in the diff is, this is just one year. It's not cumulative. It's, it's one of these things we're still looking at, is that when the diff is, do you get last year's revenue added to it every year? And, and we think that you do. We just have to go back and clarify that and look at what the votes were of the Board of Selectmen before on that item. Now, I'm also proposing for both the general stabilization fund and to create an OPED trust fund. And with that, and again, this ties into our financial management policies and also something that's positive for the bond rating agencies, is for us to be showing that we're using tax revenue to start to fund some of our stabilization and, and, and trust funds. So I'm proposing, in essence, $25,000 for each one of those to go in there. However, I'm also allocating the remaining $30,000 that's left over in our free cash, when you subtract out those expenses from the 660, to put into our general stabilization fund. This will now push us over $1 million in our general stabilization fund. We really, for good financial management, and what the bond rating agencies want to see, is, is we need to be up to around a $1.8 million number. That's where our target is. Clearly, we can't put $800,000 away, so as we're talking about the financial management policies, is our goal may be 10%, I'm sorry, 5%, but we can't make that happen day one. So we do small incremental pieces of this from the rating agencies, when they see towns going through struggles, but still maintaining financial discipline and putting things in. It's another one of those big checks that, okay, times are tough, but you're making the right decisions. Moving forward, we've programmed $75,000 for town meeting articles, $250,000 for the Board of Assessors. We have $125,000, which is what the reserve fund is. I have a little bit more money set aside in that right now because I need to deal with this North Carver diff issue, which may double in numbers. So if you will, this, this reserve fund is over budget, if you will, where they're, and I'm just calling this to your attention, is that the intent is that that money is going to be reallocated throughout the budget in another place, but this is where we parked that extra money, if you will. Old Colony Vote Tech at 883, again, something that we have no, no, no choice over. Our risk management is our insurance for the town. Now, here's where we start to get into, again, some more fundamental changes that are being proposed as part of the budget. And you heard Stephen Gray talk about the infrastructure of the town. We've hired a consultant to come in that's met with all of the infrastructure departments, DPW, Buildings and Grounds, School Facilities, the superintendent, myself, the business manager, to start to look at how we as a community better maintain our infrastructure. Now, this town, in my observation, has been very successful with maintaining its equipment, and the equipment is, is, is maintained very well. However, our facilities, just by definition, the fact that we're building potentially three new buildings within five years tells you there's something that could have been done differently. So my belief, and again, this is my recommendation, is that infrastructure items are critical to a town, and they should be treated differently. Because if you don't maintain your infrastructure, you may get by a couple of years, but it will catch up with you. It's catching up with Carver. We have three major buildings that have... We have three major buildings that have to be constructed. So with that, the proposal here is to pull all of the infrastructure items into a shared budget detail. Now, the first item is to create a central technology department for townwide technology. There was just no way of doing that before the end of this fiscal year to be ready for next year and there's too many details to work out. I put it on here as a placeholder to know that the intent is, is our networks, our computers, our infrastructure as well, and they need to be maintained. The second item is to combine the DPW and the town's Buildings and Grounds and create this town, DPW Town Facilities. The next item is a recommendation that came out of the facility study. Again, is that there are a lot of economies of scales and it's the right decision from a management standpoint and an operation standpoint to have one building DPW department townwide. But again, trying to get all of that accomplished in one year, I mean, in a few months, is just not possible. So the recommendation is to do this in two steps. The first step is, again, the combined DPW Town Facilities. The next step is the School Facilities. Now, why I am proposing to pull this out into this category is that the goal would be is next year, the budget for those two departments would be the combination of the 1.4 and the 1.7 million dollars. So this number of the 1.7 million dollars has been, in this proposal, pulled out of the school budget. That 1.7 million dollars is the cost that they have allocated into their accounting 4,000 items. So it doesn't change the dollar amount. It just pulls it and isolates it into a separate fund. As recommended by the consultant, is for the school committee to still manage its infrastructure for the next year, but manage it in an isolated account so that it's separate and distinct. So when we go through our implementation plan, if approved by the selectmen in town meeting, is that, again, we have segmented those funds into one category. This does not take away any authority for the school for this year. This does not reduce the amount of infrastructure work that can be done. It just puts it in a separate budget that's a standalone budget just for school infrastructure managed by the schools.
So the budget that was approved by the school committee last night would be reduced by this amount if we followed this recommendation?
That is correct.
Michael, you said it doesn't take away any authority from the school department for this year?
Correct.
Well, it can't take away authority from the school department.
It does not take away any school, any authority this year.
What about next year?
Next year is where the proposal coming out of the Governance Committee unanimously is for the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, through the Town Administrator and the Superintendent, to work together to develop a joint plan for managing all the infrastructure going forward that would be jointly managed by the Town Administrator and the School Superintendent. What this also does is frees up the school to focus on education and defines all the infrastructure work being put into one entity. And I think one of the examples that was mentioned tonight was the HVAC component. Now, fortunately, their director is very skilled in that. The town doesn't have that resource. So by training someone to manage all of the HVAC around town, there are, again, some cost savings. But to answer your question, no, there's no authority that's relinquished by the school committee for doing this, but for it's a separate line item in the budget.
Right, but I don't think according to our town bylaws, it ever can be taken away from the school department.
It actually can. It can by town meeting.
If you change the governing bylaws. Right.
So the next item gets into our capital components. And there's, when I mentioned the 1.85 million dollars that's transferred out, but then is coming back in to pay for these costs, is that those equal the capital leases. I'm going to come back to these two items. It includes our debt and interest. And again, that's, those are fixed costs. And you can see here our debt and interest going out for the next two years and our capital leases going out for the next five years for commitments that the town already has. Right now, we're looking at four different projects that the Capital Outlay Committee is going to have their final meeting on to confirm. But right now, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What's also proposed, and those are the critical things that need to be done now. What's also being proposed is to set up also a capital reserve fund that would come out of our Capital Stabilization Fund that would be identical in spirit to the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund. So that if you have a major piece of equipment die down, die, between now and a special town meeting or an annual town meeting, the Capital Outlay Committee would have the ability of releasing some funds to repair or to replace that equipment based upon a defined allocation of a hundred thousand dollars. And again, it's designed to be very similar to what the Reserve Fund is for the Finance Committee, but only for major capital items over ten thousand dollars. And one other component for that is background. Is there a couple of departments that have equipment that is running well now, but has passed or is about to pass its useful life? And although it's running well today, in three weeks from now, it may not. But right now, it is. And if it dies in three weeks, at least there's an opportunity to provide funding to fix that or to replace it. The next item is the benefits and employee cost. So this is the second item. And again, like, let me get into that in a second. The first is that we have increased the unemployment component, creating this restructuring element by an extra hundred thousand dollars. So it's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And again, this is set up to handle all unemployment in the town. A hundred thousand of this came out of the free cash, is that one-time restructuring cost. We then have our Plymouth County Pension Workers Comp, Health Insurance, Life Insurance, Social Security, Medicare Taxes, all of the other benefit and employee costs that the town is responsible for. This includes those same items that were in the school budget. So this has been subtracted out of the school budget in this proposal. By doing so, is we now have one centralized source, which is what most towns do, so that all of your benefits are in one area so that if you underfund a budget item, a benefit item, that there's the opportunity of going to the Finance Committee to help offset that cost. But also, more importantly, is that if there's extra revenue left over in health insurance, is that that then automatically rolls to free cash next year? And then the voters, town meeting gets to determine how they want to allocate the free cash. So this has been subtracted, again, this and the facilities component has been subtracted out of the school budget that was approved last night.
Now, but the budget they approved had those things in it.
It had those things in there, in their line items, 4,000 and 5,000. And there's additional work that we need to do with the schools. But by consolidating it, it gives us the ability of those unanticipated fluctuations, where all of a sudden a spouse that's providing healthcare to a town employee loses their insurance and now all of a sudden has to hop onto the family plan and it's eighteen thousand dollars. We can have this in one line item.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Michael, did the school, did the school understand that you've taken it out of that budget and put it here? Did they agree to that or is this going to come as a surprise to them?
I have been mentioning this and talking about it very preliminarily with Pat Mohar for a while. So have they signed off on this? The answer is no. But I think as I got to my recommendation and be able to provide an extra hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to fund those two positions, I believe that can be done through this consolidation, which provides for better financial accountability going forward. But I don't want to let you leave this meeting thinking the schools approved this. They have not, nor have they been asked to approve this. Now, so with that, what's projected is that there would be an available, after you take out the revenues, after you then subtract out the fixed cost, the priority for infrastructure, the shared employee benefits cost, is that there would be twenty million, six hundred and two thousand dollars left to fund the school and the town. And so based upon all the hard work Meg's done, this is where we, how the numbers add up, that the school budget, when you subtract those two items out that I did here, that would leave the school budget with fourteen million, eight seventy-nine. What's being proposed here is fifteen point oh one eight million dollars. That's where you get the delta of the hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So again, comparing apples and oranges, yes, they have a budget that has items that aren't typical in school budgets. When you take those out dollar for dollar, it's a smaller number than what's proposed here. But this number is larger, so that creates a delta of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which again, based upon their priorities, could be used for that fourth and fifth grade, third and fourth grade class.
And when are you going to be meeting with them to go, see if they can go along with this?
Well, let's see. I got their budget today at four o'clock. So tomorrow is when we'll start those discussions.
Is this something that may eventually come before the board with the superintendent and maybe the chairman of the School Committee coming to get into discussion with that?
Yes, what I'd probably like to do is to, earlier this year, when we developed the financial management policies, is that there was a financial management team to advise the Town Administrator, which included the superintendent, the chairman of the School Committee, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the business manager, member from the Finance Committee and also from the Capital Outlay. And that group kind of holistically looked at the financial management policies and unanimously approved those after we made some modifications. So that, those financial policies have been done there. I think I'd like to take the approach of doing the same thing here. Again, this is change. And at the end of the day, it's my recommendation, but I don't have the authority to do it. You do, town meeting does, School Committee does.
If I may, I think maybe what you might be getting at is, I think normally when we have these budget proceedings, we meet with department heads. And I think if you're going to make this bigger change in terms of what the school department is being asked to do, it'd be nice if we could hear their opinions publicly in a meeting.
Sure. Again, I present a balanced budget and from there, how you want to deliberate that, that's your call. So again, big picture view, any questions on the revenue from the expenses?
Very thorough.
All right, let me jump real quickly down here to the Capital Stabilization. I mentioned the 1.85 million dollars before. That number is a combination of five sixty-eight, five eighty-six transferred from the prior years when this fund was originally set up, plus the two and a half percent interest, plus the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for new growth for personal property, some debt service roll-off, and then what our current debt service is, which is the eight seventy-eight. That gets us to the 1.85 million dollars. When we look at our financial policies, again, that are designed around bond rating agencies and what they're looking for, is that our goal was to get to ten percent of our revenue to be put into this fund. Well, right now, that 1.85 million dollars is fifty point one four percent of what the goal is in the policies. And then next year, that 1.85 million dollars would go up. And then you would get your two and a half percent on that, plus your new growth, again, averaging on the fifty-five thousand dollars. That could be twenty-five thousand next year, that could be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Once that's done, that number will be inputted into here and everything will be adjusted accordingly as things go across. For the cost structure, again, we have three more years on both the Town Hall Bond and the Library Bond. We have one more year for our house notes pay down, and then after that, those go away. We have six more years on our capital, seven more years on our capital leases that have already been approved. When you subtract all those from the revenue, you're left with an available nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in the fund. Now, of that nine seventy-two, we have programmed into this analysis two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, a hundred thousand to set up the Capital Stabilization Reserve Fund, and then the other hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for funding those four projects. I anticipate that when we come to Special Town Meeting in the fall, is that we'll be able to reallocate that money based upon, you know, looking at what our long-term needs are as things go forward. We put down here, and the last thing on this sheet, which I think is critically important, is that, and just to go back a second, we talk about the Plymouth County Pension, is that number of about two million dollars growing is based upon what our payments are going to be to finish paying off the twenty years that are left on that note, if you will. Once that's done, technically, we'll be fully funded. Now, that doesn't include healthcare. This forty-nine million dollars is what our liability is today for every retiree that is, that left the town, plus every able-bodied worker in the town and anybody that worked for the town that's vested that is now working for another town. So that forty million dollars for their, the rest of their lives, that's what it's going to cost the towns today to fund that. That is an important number because that's one and a half times what your revenue is for the town. It's not an insignificant number. And this is a priority that is going to eventually hit the towns really hard. The state's not going to fund it for the towns. The towns are going to have to figure out how they can reduce its liability. Some of that can be done with plan designs and working on benefits going forward. But the majority of it, you own. And there's not going to be a rainbow with a pot of money at the end of it to pay for it. So I don't want to sound doom and gloom, but I don't want anyone to think, to walk away thinking we don't have a liability. We do, it's real. The annual growth of that, if we were just going to self-fund, is about two million dollars a year.
Excuse me, and I think as we sort of alluded to earlier, I think, you know, what Tom O'Brien is talking about is they are collectively, on the state level and the county level, looking to try to come up with a similar type of solution that they did on the pension side on this as well. Because they realize obviously the burden on the individual city and town to try to resolve this by themselves overnight would bankrupt pretty much all 351 cities and towns in the state. So hopefully, they will come up with a solution that, while painful, will not be terminal, you know, at the same time.
Well, let me just provide a little more clarification on that. Is that, yes, that is a possibility that there may be a state-mandated way of funding this. And in essence, what the state did is said that you pension system, you get forty years to pay it. Here's what the cost is going to be. Here's your forty payments, go do it. Now, the actuary tables change and they have to adjust that over time, but that was the plan. No subsidies. Here's your payment you're going to make every year. You start to look at this number and just the cost of doing pay-as-you-go, pay-go is what it's called, that's two million dollars. That doesn't chew down on the principal. You know, so you're probably, if you wanted to start to put together a plan where you pull down that principal, it's going to be a big number. And let me just, just for fun, and this isn't fun, but I'm going to do it anyway, is here in 2035, based upon the actuarial numbers, it's a hundred and forty-three million dollars for the town that is in our current books right now. These numbers actually may be low. So yes, there is one scenario where we can come back and put together another forty-year plan, but you're looking at ballpark, three-plus million dollars in- plan, but you're looking at ballpark, three-plus million dollars, and, you know, I don't know where to find that in the budget. So, it would have significant pain. I do want to say, and it just brought up another point, is that when we went through this budget, and, and, you know, this is Meg's first full budget, she's been here six months longer than I have, but there was not a lot of, the budget was, was relatively lean in many areas. There's not a huge glut of extra staffing capacity that people are sitting around, you know, fiddling their thumbs. I mean, everyone here, you know, generally works very hard and gets a lot accomplished. So, as we went through this, it was very difficult to find out where we can start to shave and cut some things down. And I think a lot of that goes to, to the credit of the management that was done before, is that there just isn't much money available. So, that is the one-page sheet. I want to talk about two other things right now. And this is a updated, and let me say, consolidated wage and classification plan. This doesn't change the numbers, per se, but one of the things that Meg and I were struggling with is that there were multiple different salary scales. And I'm not talking unions, because those are all tied into whatever the union contract is, but there were different scales for different non-union workers in town. What we did is, we took the existing scale for non-union management that started and went from grades A through H. Those are all the same numbers. They haven't changed at all. What we did is just kept on going from I and went all the way up to R. So you start at an eight-dollar rate, go up to a nine-seventy-five, a twelve-dollar rate, and, you know, it goes on and on. But it was trying to consolidate everyone onto one sheet of paper, so we didn't have multiple things running around. Again, there's no proposed raises in here. It just consolidates everything, and where some non-union hourly workers may have had a number as their grade, it now has a letter. Same, same, same dollar value. So then, how do you figure out what that is? The second tab that's in your packet is basically a cheat sheet, if you will, that listed who's in grade B, C, D, you know, all the way down, as to where they fall as part of their grade. Now, again, their steps may be different. There's ten steps, but one of our goals is just to try to consolidate this into, into one document. We list the five departments' heads that have contracts, and then we listed the per diem rates for those that have per diem rates. Did we, did I pass that out?
I did pass it out.
Oh.
I think the chairman was short.
So, this, this packet is really trying to lay out what our labor cost is. You know, our labor cost is eighty percent of our budget, when you really look at it, when you deal with the operating budget. So again, this first sheet creates that consolidated sheet. There's no changes to the numbers. It just puts it on one sheet, and then you have the actual positions. From there, you have three different org charts that show what the proposed Department of Public Works and Facilities Department would look like, the Department of Permitting Environmental Planning, and then finally, the Treasurer Collector's Department. Following that, there's eight pages of detail for every department's salary line item, what the grade and steps are from people, what their salary is for FY15, any other factors or longevity or contractual stuff they have, so that you can trace this back and forth as to understanding where the money is going from an employee standpoint. And it, again, tries to consolidate this onto one page, so that you, you can see that. There may be a couple, you know, typos that we have to fix in here, but again, it's, this is, this is meant to be more transparent. The last item that I have as part of the budget process tonight is this document, that's the proposed FY15 town budget. And this is the document for the town side that really gets into where the meat and the potatoes are. I was asked, well, what are the department's requests? What are their budget requests? This document provides that. This document, we'll go through each department just really quickly, because I've already have to purchase one coffee, and I don't want to buy two before the night's over.
We should, we should talk about that.
A whole box of Joe at this point?
Penalty coffee.
Penalty coffee? Penalty coffee. Would have espresso now? So this column that I've just highlighted on the screen, this is what the original budget was for FY13. Then we have the final budget for FY14, I'm sorry, thirteen, what their expenditures were in FY13, and what their original budget was for FY14. Clearly, I can't tell you what they fully expended, because they haven't completed the year, but at least you've got a good FY13 to see what was approved, and what was, what their final budget was minus expenditures. Then we get into the budgets for FY15. This column that's highlighted on the screen focuses on what the department requests are. One of my objectives and responsibilities is to figure out how we can come forward with a recommended balanced budget. So this last column is the number that, that I have presented as part of the recommendations. Now, when we started this process, and in this budget, the department requests were put together before I arrived. They were put together, I believe, in December and, and maybe November, but I know they were all done when I got here, is that, in essence, we have cut about, what is it, about nine hundred thousand, Meg? I think it was a significant amount of money from some of the department requests as, as we went through here. I'm going to just touch on just some of the highlights that we have. In the town selectmen administrator's budget, I have this category, which I will eventually split up, or based upon the recommendations of the governance committee. This is town hall additional hours. This is where we would look to potentially have work done for a consultant to provide some grant component, but also because we're looking at consolidating and reorganizing some departments, we may need, have needs for additional staffing hours, just to help through some transitions. This would be a fund town-wide, that we could, you know, have someone work for an extra ten or twenty hours in a department to help them through a project as we go through this Moving forward, you know, we've got telephone, gasoline, street lighting, finance committee, no major changes there. Again, you may see some significant percentages, but the dollar amount may not correspond to, to, to a large number. We've got the town accountant, the board of assessors. We did do some modification with the board of assessors, not significantly. The treasurer collector, there have been some modifications to that department to reduce the budget as, down by about eighteen thousand dollars. So we go from four full-time employees to three and a half employees, and that has been, and worked out with the treasurer collector, in trying to figure out how, to help her better staff her department. Let's see, town clerk, we went through and did some modifications based upon what some of the trends were and what some of the needs were. And when we have a presidential election race, that changes the numbers at times, but in a non-presidential election race, assuming we don't have to have any special elections because the governor leaves or something, is that this budget more reflects that number. Let's see. Some adjustments in the ZBA, some adjustments in the conservation commission. Again, these were all mentioned in the governance committee presentation. The DPW, I'm sorry, there's buildings and grounds. We have budgeted one summer helper this year in the buildings and grounds. Let's see, public safety. In the public safety budget, we did meet the objective in the direction of the selectmen, and have budgeted two additional officers in here that will meet the demand of having a school resource officer and also a detective, full-time detective. There's still more union negotiations we have to do with that, but at least the money has been programmed. Fire department, no major changes there. Ambulance, same. Inspections department, change, financial changes consistent to what you heard with the governance presentation. Let's see, public works, also some modifications to the, to the administrative support for that department. And we did put in some additional summer help to help them in their peak period, particularly in trying to maintain the cemeteries. And it's a perfect job for Carver student to be doing over the summer. Keeps them out of trouble, and it, it really helps what the, the needs are of the DPW, and again, buildings and grounds. Worked with John Woods to kind of look at some of the numbers they had, and he believes for some of the contract hires, that he may be able to reduce that down by ten thousand dollars compared to what was presented before, so we're going to make, try to make that work. Snow and ice, no changes. Board of health, some minor changes. Council on Aging, not much there. Let's see, the veterans agents stayed the same. Library, there has been some modifications in coordinating with the library director and how she needs to manage the library into the, you know, with new technology coming online versus the old, you know, file cards that no one, that we don't need anymore, the index cards. Again, I, I just skimmed through this, so I didn't get into any detail, but you have the detail there. It shows trends, and it shows what the department requests were for each one of those departments.
I really appreciate this. I was wondering, is this going to be part of a package that will be available to the residents at town meeting? This is similar to what they have done in previous years, but it's gone into a lot more detail, which I really appreciate, because you really get to see pretty much where every dime goes.
Our intent is to post this on the website tomorrow, so that these are available in PDF documents for people to review.
Oh, that'd be great.
Now, again, and, and, you know, Meg's done a tremendous amount of work pulling this stuff together. Hopefully, we didn't make any boo-boos, but we are human. We think that our numbers tie out. We're pretty confident in that, but we want public review. We want the finance committee to take a hard look at this, the selectmen to get involved in, and, and, you know, feel free to meet with any individual departments if you have any questions on this. But there are some changes in here. There are some impacts to that. The changes were all done in an objective fashion, looking at what the needs are of the department, what the services are that are required to be delivered, and figuring out how to best deliver those services. This is our proposal for you to take a look at. At the end of the day, it needs to be your budget, and then it needs to be town meeting's budget.
Excuse me, Michael, I know that tonight was for the purposes of really just presenting this to us, and when we get together in a couple of weeks, we'll have an opportunity to go more in-depth. But I did have two quick questions. One was just very straightforward. This is normally what's handed out at, at town meeting, which goes line item by line item through the budget. You would include a column, obviously, of the FinCom's recommendations and all these items as well, I assume?
Absolutely.
There's actually another file. I think it's the next tab over. That's the one that usually goes to town meeting, and I think, does that one, yeah, that one has the finance.
Okay, that's all. It was, I assumed it would. And then also, aren't you also proposing a change of the, the capital building committee become the capital stabilization committee, right? I mean, that's part and parcel of what's going on, is, is that we're basically expanding the definition of the capital stabilization committee from being the capital building committee, so that it will have the ability to do more than just fund buildings. If we have to replace a roof or do something else, it'll have a broader capability.
Correct. And, and just for clarification, it's the capitals, right now, we have a capital building stabilization fund. And what's proposed is to have a capital stabilization fund that encompasses all the items of the other fund, plus any equipment and, and capital outline-related items. So, going back to the bottom of this summary page, this last item is, is the key piece here. So that the funds in that will be first used to pay for any debt service that the town's committed to. The second is that after that, is to then fund for any capital outlay items that fall within your available funds for that year, that have gone through your priority list and have been vetted out. And, and that's, so this line item right here is what would be available for that number going forward. So, to talk a little bit about detail of that, what I will be proposing is part of the town meeting motions, is that both the school building committee and the fire station building committee both need additional design funds. One of those things is required by MSBA. I'm not proposing taking those funds out of here. What I am proposing is using the balance of the money that's in the capital building stabilization fund, that was put in there last year and the previous years, to fund the preliminary design and feasibility for both those projects to get those moving. And then when we come to the fall town meeting, depending upon what else we need to do, we could then go back and potentially supplement that. Having said that, though, the, at least the fire station has already been approved by town meeting, and it's really up to, to the board of selectmen to issue debt on that. I prefer to use that existing fund, because it's cash on hand, than to go out and borrow money for the next few months, which is why I'd be recommending going in that direction.
But this new capital stabilization fund would be the source of the funding for the debt on the new fire station when we move into the construction phase?
That is correct. So right here, we, we programmed that into the thing, into the budget, so we have, you know, fire station future bond. Again, it's zero right now, but we wanted to at least show everybody where it would be. The same thing here with the elementary school, is that if we're able to fund a small little sliver of that project through this fund, then it could go there. We know we're going to have to fund the majority of that through a debt exclusion. It, the numbers just don't work, and we'll also be able to use some potential CPA funds to fund elements of the school. But this would be potentially the third source that we may be able to sneak a little bit in.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, by the, for the meeting, you know, for our board meeting, when we actually accept this and vote for this, would it be possible to also have a listing of everything that's going to have to be passed, the recommendations of the governance committee? They're going to have to make it through town meeting for this to actually work. So I'll be able to have a good, a better feel for that?
Sure. And a lot of this, a lot, the, the reorganization components can all be done through the budget process and the org charts that I presented. And that'll be as part of an article for town meeting.
Okay.
When it comes to the hiring process for the police chief, or the decommissioning, if you will, the DPW commissioners, those will all have to be done through articles that Lauren Goldberg is working on right now. The intent is those will be available for review next Tuesday. And then, following the comments that you present to the governance committee and what they hear from the public, they'll finalize those. We'll include those as proposed articles for our warrant. And then our next board meeting in two weeks is we'll have the, the draft warrant, which will accommodate all of those items that you're looking for.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are we going, if I may, are we going to have a chance to have the department heads present when we go through the budget?
Well, the answer to that, it depends upon how you want to do that. I was talking to, to the finance chair recently about this, and to other members of the selectmen. Historically, as I understand it, in February, you received what the departments were requesting. Whether or not it could be funded or not, it was just that you had your Saturday meeting, so you went through that. This, where we are at this stage, is that we've taken their numbers and balanced the budget based upon the holistic view of the town. Having said that, I think it's critically important for you to hear from the department heads. Now, the question is, what's the mechanism to do that? Do you have a joint meeting with the finance committee and, you know, have all the departments come in for, you know, ten minutes, schedule them right after the thing, and, you know, what are the pros and schedule them right after the other thing, and you know, what are the pros and cons of how your budget's been adjusted? How's that going to impact service or not impact service? That could be one scenario, you could have the standalone Saturday meeting, although we're, you know, getting warmer weather and people have commitments with graduations and other things, so that may not be possible. I guess the real question is that, yes, I think it's important you hear from the department's heads collectively. But it's up to you as to how you want to do that.
My feeling was that I think they should be present, and then if they want to comment, they can. I don't think they should feel obliged, but they certainly should be allowed to be there.
I do like to hear a little from them, from their mouth, talking about it. And I don't mean it needs to be a half-hour or hour presentation by each department head, but could they explain just the final bottom lines in their budget? Quick like, and what they're going to suffer with, or what, so a 10 to 15, could we, that would be like a two, two and a half, three-hour meeting?
You know, whatever you want to do, we will make happen, and I just want to just turn to John and see if you have any thoughts on the Finance Committee's standpoint, how you'd like to perceive.
I mean, we're kind of at a loss because we used to have the opportunity to meet one of all the department heads, you know, during the process to find out what their thoughts are, and then have the Saturday meeting, already having that kind of input. Doing it now with this current budget, I mean, yeah, we should hear the pros and cons, what they're facing. But I see it being, you know, full Saturday, maybe a Saturday, I mean, it took time.
To what extent, I assume you've met with all the department heads and all the department heads are aware of the sheet? I mean, they understand if they asked for this, that they're getting that, if they asked for that, they're getting this.
Correct.
I mean, my inclination would be to invite them all to attend our next meeting. And if they want to speak to their, you know, department issues, to let them speak? As opposed to setting aside an entire day to do it.
Right, just only if they want to, because some of the budgets, they may not have any issues with.
Right, that was sort of my intention.
I mean, I do think it's important that you hear from them. May, how about this for a suggestion, is that our next meeting, maybe we start at six o'clock? And buy pizza or something, I don't know, but.
I don't know why you're saying that. Are we halfway through yet?
I'm just buying a box of Joe, I know that. And then, you know, I do think, take five minutes, have every department head just get up and, you know, if they only spend a minute talking about their budget, I think that that's an important component. So they can talk about what the services are they're going to provide. And again, some may only take a minute or two and not want to say anything more than that. Some may want to take 20 minutes, but I think we could probably expeditiously do that. I'm thinking outside the box.
You can even make it optional, whether they have the opportunity to speak if they want to, and we'll accommodate it.
I think that'd be the best way, give them the opportunity, because you can't force them to speak if they, oh, I suppose you could. But doesn't make any sense to force them to speak if they have nothing really to say, if they're happy with their budget, they understand it, and move on to the next.
Don't say they're happy if they can live with it.
How about this, and again, we're thinking out loud here, thinking outside the box, is we have the depart, my next staff meeting, I'll make sure everybody's got the updated stuff, which they do, and if anyone has any issues or concerns that they feel that they want to share with the selectmen, I'll ask them to just contact us and we'll schedule that at the next meeting, so we know who wants to do it, and go from that approach versus inviting everybody here to see who wants to come and present.
Okay.
Because it sounds like, you know, you only want to hear from people that really have something they want to say, so let me see what.
Instead of dragging everybody here, yeah. Lynn's saying yes, so she's.
And in the future, we'll be working on the setting up the protocols, so as we go into next year, this will be all done differently.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the budget should be submitted in the fall.
This was a tough year.
Okay, thank you.
You guys did an incredible job. A lot of work, a lot of work.
Yeah, Meg, thank you very much, thank you, Michael.
Meg's done it all. She's superwoman. So that's the conclusion of my budget presentation. I have one other thing in here. It's off the tip of my tongue, and that is, in your packet, you received a letter from the Attorney General dated May 5th for an open meeting law complaint. As, and I'm sure you've had a chance to read that, they have determined that there was no violation for the ZBA. I did talk to council, and council says that this complaint, they spent almost $1,000 in legal fees defending the town on this. But the good news is, is that there, again, there was no violation. There was one other thing I had to talk about, and I can't recall what it is. So Mr. Chairman, if I can come back to that later on when I recall?
Yes. Okay, at, next, next is the Board of Selectmen Comment Period. That means we do our comments, no? And then we go to Lynn's discussion, maybe, on ethics and election workers? Why don't we take her, because we don't have anybody else that needs to speak to us except Lynn. Then it'll be all us, and us reviewing the Building Committee for the school and accepting grants. So can I take Lynn out of order?
She would greatly appreciate that.
You're the chair.
Okay, so Lynn, jump up and let it rip.
Good evening. If my teeth chatter, it's because I'm freezing, and I should have brought the coffee, Michael. Thank you for this, this time. I just wanted to reiterate the importance of what Michael spoke about earlier with the ethics training. There's a lot of boards and committees, we have about 280 board committee members and department heads that probably, and town employees that should probably attend. I know it's a multiple choice ethics exam that everybody can kind of breeze through, but the training is really important for everyone. Also, I wanted to mention that we are in need of election workers. And I don't know if too many people are aware of it, but election workers get paid. So anybody who's interested, it's $9 an hour to check in or check out. They are long hours for town elections and state, state primary and state elections. We have two of them coming up, September 9th is the state primary, and November 4th is the state election. I would need people to apply before the end of May, beginning of June, so that I can get the list up to the Board of Selectmen, so that you people may appoint them. Also, since we're talking about changing the town meeting, I need to let people know that we're canceling the last day to register to vote, which is next Friday, the 23rd. So we're going to cancel that because it no longer applies, and we'll be changing that to May 27th. And if we have a special town meeting, I'm not sure if we'll be having a special town meeting inclusive with that annual town meeting. I don't know if anybody can tell me that, but we'll have an additional date for that as well. And I'll have to let people know that. Thank you very much.
Do you need to have, how much time to have the agenda and the articles posted for everybody? Is that 10 days before the meeting, or town meeting?
For town meeting, they have to have the warrant. I believe it's, is it seven days before the annual town meeting? Seven, I thought, seven, or two weeks, is it 14? It might be 14. Is it 10 for the special town meeting? 10 for the special town meeting, 14 for the annual?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, Board of Selectmen Comment Period, who'd like to start that off? All right, why don't we start on your end, Helen, and go right around?
Sure. I just want to wish our new board success and good camaraderie over the next year and moving forward. I think I already have good vibes that it's going to be a great board, so I welcome Alan and Ron to the board. The only other thing I wanted to ask, if we could put on the agenda, and unfortunately, I have to say, in this day and age, it's a sensitive topic, but there's been a lot of articles, and it made me start to think that. I would like to bring prayer, a short prayer at the opening of each session after the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to discuss that at the next meeting, if that's okay. And that's it.
We will put that on the agenda, wouldn't we, Lynn?
Yeah, just another agenda item, maybe for next week or the week after. I'd like to get an update on the, from the Capitol, I guess they call it the Capitol Building Stabilization Committee, the folks that sort of put together the, under the Tax Levy Plan. Just to have them included in the conversation when we go through the budget, just a quick presentation as to where they're at, because I know they're continuing to meet and exploring different ideas and so forth. And then the only other thing I know of just going on around town is I believe the sportsmen's clubs having their scholarship breakfast on Saturday. Did I say six in the morning to 11?
7:30 to 11.
Seven, it says six on the website.
It's supposed to be 7:30.
Okay, all right, so.
You can arrive at six if you want.
If you arrive at six, you're helping the cook.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, so it's 7:30 to 11, this is coming Saturday morning, the 17th.
Do I get to go last? Yeah, so why don't we go? Sarah, Sarah, why don't you, Sarah, why don't you go ahead, please?
Okay, well, thank you. I do also want to congratulate Ron and Alan, and thank you both for all the work you put into the election. And I want to thank the voters who voted, it's very important, everyone's vote really matters. I wanted to remind people that the Memorial Day Parade is Monday, May 26th, at, Dick, you were saying the time?
9:30.
9:30, and it begins right across the street in Downey, is it, the Sons of Veterans Hall? I also wanted to, I'll save my last item, it's not necessary, in the interest of time.
Ellen?
Okay, well, since this is the first chance I've had, you know, our first meeting since the election, I did want to thank Andy Cattarelli for running, and running a very good campaign. And I think all three of the selectman candidates, you know, worked hard to try to keep it a level campaign and, you know, stick with the issues. And I also like to thank everybody that actually did run public office. As I found out, it takes a lot to put yourself out there, and you're all to be commended on that, and I really appreciate it. Also, I'd like us to keep Brian McKinney in our prayers, he's a gentleman that died on the accident on Center Street on April 30th, as well as Shawna Calhoun, who's still in the hospital, she's had a number of surgeries, surgeries as well as the two boys from Carver. And finally, chorus is my thing, and the high school spring concert for the choral instrumental will be Thursday, May 15th at 7:00 PM. I'll announce the other ones when it gets into June, but the one for the high school, it's really the last chance to see some really talented vocalists and instrumentalists from the high school perform. Also, it's a kind of a fundraiser for the music boosters, they will be raffling off baskets and gift certificates, and that's it. Oh, the other thing is, I would like to see on the next agenda, us discuss how we can streamline the signing of the warrants, so we can get the bills out on time, I think it'll make people happier, if we can get paid on time, or pay our vendors on time.
Thank you, well, yes, I wanted to remind everybody to come to the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 27th. We do not have a meeting now until the day after Memorial Day. So, what is it, the 27th or 26th?
I think it's the 26th, yeah.
Yeah, our next meeting is the 27th, Memorial Day's the 26th, so the parade is at 9:30 in the morning. We have four young men from Carver going to receive their Eagle Scout badge on this Sunday. This is a very notable occasion. Very few towns have had four of their young men receive this coveted award in any one year. They are Joshua Goodman, Sean Rowe, Richard Butts, and Christopher Balbin. So congratulations to them, and we have certificates we're going to give them. And are any of the selectmen going to be going on Sunday?
I'm going.
It's 12 to 1, okay. We have four, and you need to sign them, please, Ms. Helen, okay? I too want to congratulate two new selectmen and Mr. Cattarelli for their campaigns. Thank all candidates that participated in the election. Remember, it's America, that's what we're all about. I want to thank my fellow selectmen for having the confidence in me to ask me to be the chairman. I will do the best I can and be as fair as I can. That would be a wrap, okay? Next, public, nope.
School Elementary Building Committee update?
School Elementary Building Committee update, yep. Michael, you want to do that, or you want me to do that? All I was going to do is just go down the agenda that we did. We met on, what was it, last Monday, yep, and there were like 11 members present, and the chairman did an overview, and we talked about how we were going to communicate to the community. And we're working on several things on that. We went over the Collins Report, Mr. Ryan, Dan Ryan, one of our members, and where that, that was going. We talked about the site selection for the school. Remember, at present, there are three different possible sites. One at the Governor John Carver School presently, and then two on the high school, junior high school site. One, the Ball Field area, and then one, the wooded section over near, what's the name of the road? Pawn Street, yep. So we finished our meeting that day with the pros and cons, just roughly. We haven't come to a decision, and I'm sure there's going to be some more distinct little particulars that are going to come up in that process. Michael, can you tell us the sewage and water thing?
Yes, this morning, we had a meeting with DEP. And in that, that discussion is, they provided some recommend, some suggestions for us to explore that would allow for a new facility to go up on either site, whether the existing elementary school or the two sites around the middle high school, that would not have any noticeable impact to the new well that would need to be done, and/or the wastewater facility. So where those appeared to be initially some constraints, there are ways to make that work that meet all of DEP regulations without impacting the two, the two potential sites. And I think the other component is, they also proposed some suggestions on how to reduce the cost of a wastewater treatment plant going forward, recognizing that one is needed, whether or not the school, the elementary school is built on that property, one way or the other. I think the other important component that has come out is that the MSBA, we look like we're on track to meeting their July 30th meeting, which immediately following that, we should be invited into their capital pipeline, which will allow them to participate in a cost share of any engineering feasibility analysis that we need to do for the new facilities. And they have committed, they will participate in any site that is chosen by the town, provided that it's new or different work. They won't pay for a new study to look at the existing school to see if there's a need, they've already paid for the need. We know there's a need, so they're not going to come back and pay for that again. But any changes we make to, to either the previously proposed project or new. project or new projects, they will fully participate in funding. So that's, that's another key component. I do wanna commend the superintendent, through her diligent work in putting together the necessary reports for the MSBA, is that where we had two hundred and seventy days to complete this first phase, we will complete that in half the time, with this July thirtieth timetable. So our intent is that at town meeting, again, we will be asking for the additional funds for the feasibility and the design, and once that's done, then, then we'll be invited into the pipeline.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we have acceptance of some grants. I can explain the first one. AD Makepeace Neighborhood Fund grant for the farmer's market was thirty-five hundred dollars. That is for promotional activities all around the full season of the farmer's markets, including music.
I make a, I make a motion, we accept the grant.
Okay, with any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting that grant, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, so Lynn? Okay, the MIA Loss Control Grant for the Police Department, sixteen hundred and fifty-five dollars, for booking room surveillance equipment?
I make a motion, we accept that grant.
Second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Anybody, okay, all those in favor of accepting that grant, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Right, and application, appointment of Kevin Tracy, Community Preservation Committee? You all should have a copy of his application.
I'd like to make a motion, we appoint Kevin Tracy to the Community Preservation Committee?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just I give Kevin credit, he stayed as long as he possibly could.
Yes, he did.
And then finally gave up, so that, but I give, he should get kudos for lasting that long.
Do I owe him a coffee, too?
I'm not saying that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of appointing Kevin Tracy to the Community Preservation Fund, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Application for one day special license for the Frosty Dog, SADD.
That's been withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
Is it? Oh, okay. All right, request for the use of Sherliffe Park, Lisa Thibodeau, SADD, June twenty-first, ten AM to three PM.
Do we know what it's for?
Yeah, it's in here.
Uh, yeah, it's for.
Oh, it's in the, uh.
Yeah. It's for cancer fundraiser.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Third.
It's a fundraiser for a good cause. All right, all those in favor of adopting or allowing that, say aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous, Lynn? Okay? Minutes. Have you all had a chance to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On that previous one, the question, is that one of those situations, I know we have the new fee structure, but I, it's my understanding, we have the ability to go ahead and waive a fee for Sherliffe Park for something, for a fundraiser such as this, if we so choose?
The Board of Selectmen do have the ability waiving any fees they so choose to.
I would like to move that, since it's for cancer research, that we waive the normal fee for using Sherliffe Park for Lisa Thibodeau?
Certainly.
Second, Matt.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So that is a, a free day.
Mr. Chairman, recommendation for the board is that I would suggest that you consider putting together a policy?
Yeah.
So in the future, you determine what types of things you, you will consider waiving, not what you will, but what you will consider. And again, try to make the distinction between, you know, a nonprofit is a nonprofit, but, but what special causes or functions do you want, would you be willing to consider versus others that you wouldn't?
Maybe we may have to get a subcommittee together to just try to formulate something.
I think we should put that on our next agenda.
Sounds like a volunteer, Alan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I designate you.
You wanna make that, that committee?
Have a subcommittee, one?
Subcommittee right now? No, I don't, well.
Yes, some other time.
Well, you didn't have much fun with my last round of recommendations starting this meeting, so you sure you want me to be writing another policy?
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't think it needs to be a big, long, ten-page thing.
Yeah, I think if you just pull the list of all the permits over the last year, and sort of see what they were, that'll give you a sense of what kind of selections you have.
We do have to be careful, because it could open a can of worms, or a lot of disgruntled.
You could hold a fundraiser for yourself.
That's right, and God knows, I need a college fund right now.
You do need.
Yeah.
You do have some town expense to somebody using the park, you know, you got the bathrooms and the electricity and the trash pickup.
And, I mean, you could even make a distinction between the actual cost to the town versus the town making a few dollars on, on the rental, so that you could, that could be taken into account as well.
Okay, Alan, you, would you be willing to serve on a subcommittee like that?
Yeah, I'll do that, make that out.
You know what? I'll sit with you, and maybe we can sit with Michael sometime for a little, few minutes, and.
That's the price you pay at ten thirty at night.
I'm off the next two. I'm off the next two days.
I'll be happy to make that motion, to form the subcommittee, to put Alan, Dick, and Michael to work again.
Do we need to have a vote on?
Yeah, we moved, we moved and seconded.
Okay, you moved and seconded, all right, any further discussion? Okay?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's so voted unanimously. All right, now we'll go to minutes, I think that was a good point, Alan, cause I was thinking about it, we're, we're gonna charge fifty dollars to a cancer fund, you know? So, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, any additions or omissions? We need a second.
Second.
Okay, any additions and omissions, or whatever? All righty, ready for the vote? All those in favor of accepting the minutes of April twenty-second, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstaining.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
The vote would be three, four, zero against, and two abstaining. Very good.
Really, three, two.
All right.
Three, zero, two.
Zero, two.
Okay, public comment period.
I will make this short, if you will.
Come on, yeah, sit down and give your name and address, Richard.
Mike is looking at me like this is gonna be another long, drawn-out affair.
You only get three minutes?
No. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna request that.
Anything more than three minutes, you're buying coffee, according to the vice chairman.
I don't drink coffee, you're on your own.
But we do.
We do.
Get it? Three minutes is.
The clock is ticking.
Hit and a half, right? Okay.
This is gonna be like taking candy.
Give your name and address.
The clock is ticking.
Rich Guy's in Meadowbrook Way. I'd like to request that I be put on the next meeting's agenda, because what I want to cover could be a little more than five minutes, because I've done some more research on this housing problem that we have out back, and I'd like to fill you all in on it. And I have come up with some ideas, and I hope you will go along with it. To include in the motion, because I'm, I want to.
Can you, Richard, I think as the chairperson, I have the authority to put an agenda item of a citizen on the agenda, so why don't you talk to me and present your facts, and then I'll, I'll try to make the decision when to, where to.
Well, you have my motion, I'm, what I'm requesting is one thing at first, because this is, you've seen my motion, that I put forth, forth the last time I was here, I'd be looking for a committee to, to select.
That could be part of the discussion.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
And just make, you're gonna have to catch me and give me the.
That's why I wanted to reach you before tonight, when I called you house.
Well, I couldn't have put it on tonight anyway.
No, no, but I wanted to discuss it with you.
All right, so.
I didn't have Ron's phone number, and I didn't have Alan's phone number.
That way, you don't, you don't have to go into the discussion now, you can wait till.
That's why I wanna keep it short and sweet, because it is late, and. Okay?
We got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, anybody else, public?
We had to wear them out.
Hyacinth?
Yeah.
Hyacinth, you got a lot of stamina.
Yeah, really.
Or no life.
He said it.
Oh, that means I'm out of the cheesy fries.
We are going to go into executive session, we're going under the exemption number two and number three.
And number seven. And number seven, I think.
There's a revised one?
Sorry, and number seven. The suggestion motion, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions, clerical, dispatchers, DPW, police, and for non-union negotiations with all non-union personnel not under contract, and strategy for litigation in a MCAD Carver Police Department case from two thousand and five, with patrolman person Basset, Dufally, Inglehart, and Sarmiento against former police chief Parker, to consider the lease of value of real estate and taxes for the Southern Sky Renewable Project in the Carver landfill, that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and to reconvene in open session.
Mr. Chairman, are we really gonna reconvene in open session? I know you say, I know that's part of the boilerplate, but.
You have to.
You have to.
It's easy. You just adjourn twice.
Yeah, for clarification, what we should say on the end of these, if we have no intention of doing further business, is to reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Okay.
And that, thank you for the clarification.
And I'll have that adjusted for the next one of these.
Oh, yeah, we need to take a voice vote.
Aye.
Sarah says aye.
Your name, you're gonna give your name.
Alan says aye.
Ron?
Ron, Ron Clark says aye.
Alan says aye.
Dick Ward says aye. Okay, we're going into.